Good evening. The time being six o'clock and this being the Plymouth Select Board, I will call to order this, the July twenty-second, 2025 meeting of Plymouth Select Board at this time. Please join the board for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the board are joining us here in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall. Members of the public or presenters may be joining us here in person at the Great Hall at Town Hall, or they may be joining us over the Zoom webinar platform. The login information for the Zoom webinar platform is included on the agenda that is posted on the town website. Members of the public that want to simply observe this meeting may also do so by watching us on Comcast Channel nine or Verizon Channel forty-seven. Members of the public are also reminded, under Massachusetts general law, that any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the chair, so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. At present, we are aware of a recording being made by the local scene for the Zoom webinar broadcast, as well as the television and YouTube rebroadcast of the meeting. All right, so that brings us into our agenda. First listed item, or items, on our agenda would be the listed licenses. We have a one-day wine and malt, outdoor amplified music, and an ever-source utility petition. Wish of the board in regards to the listed licenses.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the one-day wine and malt licenses, the outdoor amplified music license, and the ever-source utility petition.
Okay, so Mr. Golden moves that we approve the listed licenses as a group. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Iaquinto, seconds. Any discussion as to whether or not we should approve the listed licenses as a group? Hearing and seeing none? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved the listed licenses as a group. That brings us into the administrative notes. We have one administrative note this evening. Wish of the board in regards to Admin Note One.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Golden moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Iaquinto, seconds, that we approve Admin Note One. Discussion as to whether or not we should approve Admin Note One for many members of the board? Hearing and seeing none? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved Admin Note One. That brings us into our agenda proper. First item on our agenda proper being an update from the town clerk's office. And we are joined by two members of our town clerk, our assistant town clerk, and our election coordinator, and I will turn it over.
Good evening. My name is Elvira Galino. I am the assistant town clerk.
Good evening. My name's Tyler, the election coordinator. Thank you for having us this evening.
We are here today to give an update from the clerk's office regarding the status of voters in the town of Plymouth, specifically our inactive voter status change for any voters here in town that did not return the 2025 annual street listing. If we could start with our first slide, thank you. All right. What is the town census? The town annual street listing, or census, is an annual document sent to households every year, and it is legally distinct from the National United States Census. The purpose of this census is that it assists the town in computating data that assists us with public safety and emergency response, any type of grants that the town might apply for, calculating state and federal aid monies, and different projects such as school enrollment and other public interest initiatives. The street listing is sent out, and when people receive it, they can correct any type of changes if someone moves out of town, moves within Plymouth, or is all, no changes, all the same, still within Plymouth at the same address. Now, where do inactive voter statuses come into this equation? When someone does not respond to the street listing, an active voter changes their status from active to inactive. What does this mean? Voters are still registered voters even if they are inactive. All that happens is that, at the polls, inactive voters must show ID at the time of voting. At that time, if someone shows ID and votes, they are changed back to their active status. Anyone who is not going to return that inactive statement, changing back to an active status, and who does not complete a voter submission, so does not vote in two consecutive state elections, that voter would be removed from the voter rolls. Bear in mind that there are several ways to change from inactive to active, by voting in the next or second state election coming up, or by returning postcards that the clerk's office has sent to voters.
All right, so the, those postcards that Elvira spoke about is what brings us here this evening. Our office has mailed those out to voters already. They were put in the mail on Friday. They've already hit voters' mailboxes. Pleased to report that we've already started receiving them back, which is wonderful. So we mailed out twenty-one thousand postcards to voters who, again, failed to respond to the 2025 census. That's, we have fifty-three thousand registered voters here in town, so a good number of voters will receive the postcard, which is why we wanted to come here today to talk about it, make sure voters knew what was happening and what they needed to do. So the notice that we mailed them that postcard, and I have a printed copy of it here, if any of the Select Board wishes to see it, happy to bring it over. What it does is it asks them three simple questions. Do you still live in the address that we have you listed at here in Plymouth? Did you move within Plymouth? If so, what is your new address in Plymouth? Or did you leave Plymouth? Did you move to another city or town? All they have to do is check one of those three boxes, sign and date it, and pop it back in the mail. Their postage prepaid, so they truly just have to fill it out, drop it in, and we will get it. And what happens is when we receive that postcard, we respond to it accordingly. So if they say, I still live in Plymouth at the same address, we assign them active status again. If they say, I moved within Plymouth, instead of Prince Street, I now live on San Jacinto, then with their signature, we're able to update their voter registration, get them registered at their new address, and they'll go from inactive to active once again. And if they respond to the sense of the postcard and they say, I have left Plymouth, then what we do is we remove them from the voter rolls because they have left Plymouth and they are no longer a registered voter. At that point, they'd have to re-register in whatever town they now live in, or if they have left the state, whatever state they live in. I want to emphasize that, once that active status is reassigned, those voters go to the polls and everything is as normally happens when they go to vote. They don't have to show ID, they don't have to fill out a form, they just check in, they get their ballot, and they go and vote. But if they're inactive, as Elvira said, so if they fail to respond to the postcard, when they go to the polls, they'd have to show ID to the warden and sign a very quick form that just says, I attest that I still live at that address, and then they're given a ballot, and they're sent to their booths to fill out the ballot and cast their vote. So as Elvira alluded to, the primary way that you go from inactive to active is, again, filling out and returning that postcard. That confirmation notice is the legal term. That's the primary method, easiest method, guarantee inactive to active status once again. There are, the state has allowed a variety of ways in which a voter can return to active status outside of responding to the postcard, namely, voting in any election. So if a voter is inactive, they go to the polls next May for the local town election, they'll show ID, they'll fill out that very quick form, they'll be given their ballot, they'll cast it. That action of voting reactivates the voter, so they're once again now an active voter. So at that point, there's nothing else for them to do. If they apply to vote by mail, so let's say January twenty-twenty-six, a voter knows there's a lot of elections coming up, we have a number of them next year, if they fill out a vote-by-mail application, either the postcard that the state mails them, or they download and print a copy from our website, or they apply to vote by mail online, that action of applying to vote by mail activates them once again, and that's all they would have to do. And then finally, the other thing is updating their voter registration. So if they come into our office to switch their party, or they have moved, they want to update their voter registration, that action makes them active once again. And one thing I do want to note, which is important, is that with automatic voter registration at the Registry of Motor Vehicles, a lot of, we get about eighty voter registration applications from the Registry of Motor Vehicles every day. Most of those are folks who are already registered to vote, but we get a lot of those, so a lot of folks are going from inactive to active by going to the registry, just in the last couple days since we've mailed these postcards. But the recommendation from our office, and we really want to stress, is to fill out the postcard, sign it, date it, put it back in the mail. That is the recommended course of action to return to active status. There, like I said, there are other ways, but that is the strongly recommended method of action. And that is all that we have for you this evening. Happy to take any questions, and I'll also just bring this over to the board for you to look at what the postcard looks like.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from board members for our town? Yes, Phil?
Mr. Chairman, sorry for my tardiness. I was in a other meeting and I lost track of time, so I apologize. But I see the postcard that you're working on. I just hope that that it appears at home and looks appealing, so someone might look at it. I received my notice of changing of polling locations, and at first I thought it might be a recall on my car. It would look very, very digitized and very, you know, like, is this, it didn't really pop out. Maybe putting the town logo on this and stamping it like voter information, something around it that would grab the resident's attention with a little color. It's black and white. I know that one color is less expensive than two colors, but maybe something with the town loader saying, your voter, your voter information, something that will grab their eye at a certain font size. Because I did, I'd note that the mailing that you did in the spring was great, it was very helpful, but it did have this very, this look that might get missed with all the other mail coming in. So just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from any other board members? So, no one else does. So you sent out twenty-one thousand, thereabouts, of these, and you've already started receiving some back?
Yep, we've already started receiving. I would say they hit mailboxes, I suspect, on Monday. We've received, at this point, you know, less than a hundred a day later, but they are trickling in, and I suspect tomorrow with the mail, we'll receive a good chunk of them.
Okay, and if you, let's say somebody doesn't return theirs, and then they're going to vote in, let's say, the next election unless something else unexpected comes up is, is May of next year.
May of next year, yep.
Yeah, so they would come in, they would come to the polls, they'd be asked, you know, are you, you know, oh, I'm Kevin Canty, I live here, this is my, and then, oh, you're not, you're on inactive status, I'd have to show my ID, but then I get a ballot just like everybody else.
Yep, so what will happen is you go to check in like normal, like you said, you share your information, my name is Tyler Hazard, I live in such, such an address. The poll worker will say, okay, I see that you're listed as inactive, so they'll instruct you to walk over to the warden table, and the warden will ask you to present ID to them, so driver's license typically. And then there's a short form that the warden mostly fills out, that the voter then signs.
Yep.
That says they are attesting to still living at the address that they're listed at on our voter list.
Yep.
And then, as soon as that's done, the voter will return to the check-in table, the poll worker will give them their ballot, just like everyone else, and they'll head over to their privacy booths, fill out the ballot, and drop it in the tabulator, just like all of their voters.
Okay. And, all right, and then, in order, so that your vote would count if you did that, but if you wanted to avoid having to go through the rigmarole of that and bringing an ID, you can do any of these. You can sign and return the notice that you received this. You can vote in any election, you can apply to vote by mail, update your voter registration, including at the registry.
Yep.
Just to make it crystal clear, because I know fifty-three thousand or so registered voters, twenty-one thousand not returning, that's a large percentage, an alarmingly large percentage of people that are ignoring the census, but hopefully that will not happen again in the future. But just in case anybody is concerned about that. And, and so it's two state elections, it would take really four years of you doing essentially nothing.
Exactly.
To be removed from the voter rolls.
Exactly.
So it's not something that happens to you overnight, it's, it's something you have plenty of time to do any of these things in order to avoid that from happening.
Exactly. It would take the voter not participating in any election for two consecutive state elections, which, as you said, is approximately four years, so it would be November twenty-twenty-six and November twenty-twenty-eight. At that point, if they've not engaged in our voting or election system at all, then they would be removed from the voter list, and they would be mailed a letter saying you have been removed from the Plymouth voter rolls, and there would be instructions if this was an error, or you want to change this, feel free to contact our office, and they would be, at that point, if they wanted to re-register as a voter, they would be perfectly within their right to do so.
Yeah, so if you, if that were to happen, there's no penalty, other than you can't vote until you re-register, but you just re-register again and you're right back.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just, just in case anybody.
Yeah.
Gets upset about receiving a card or alarmed by receiving a card, I'd rather them know that it's, it's just a clerical and administrative function. It's necessary for us to keep the voter rolls updated according to state law.
Right.
And I know that that's what you, you guys are just trying to do for us, so.
Exactly. Anyone who's received a letter is still a registered voter, and they can vote in any upcoming election.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Very informative. All right, so that brings us into the next item on our agenda, which is the Cedarville landfill update. We are joined by David Gould, the Director of Energy and Environment. Welcome, Mr. Gould.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm going to begin by giving sort of an overview of landfill monitoring in general, just so everyone will have some background as to what actually happens. There's been a lot of discussion about that lately. It's important to know that the town has three landfills. All three are routinely monitored. They're monitored by, in our case, a company called Weston and Sampson, which is a third party. Important to note that the third parties that do landfill monitoring and Commonwealth have to be registered and approved by the Department of Environmental Protection, so it's not just anyone that's going out there and doing the sampling and the reporting. As I mentioned, we have three landfills. I'm going to begin with the South Street landfill. I think most people are familiar with that. There is quarterly gas, soil gas sampling out there, and quarterly reports that are issued to DEP, so those, that sampling is done, and then those reports are submitted to DEP. South Street's a great example of what can happen when reporting is done and issues come up. So it's not that when a landfill is monitored, that if issues arise, things don't have to be addressed. So South Street is a great example of that. Back in two thousand and one, there was a need for what was called an immediate response action, based on methane levels out behind the police station parking lot, and that ultimately led to an entire process that DEP is well-defined, where we had to go through initial site assessment, a comprehensive site assessment, and an alternatives analysis, a corrective action design, and then, as you recall, we basically completely excavated out the police station parking lot, removed all the solid ways, put clean fill, put a methane network. So that's just a good example of when something is found, DEP will come back to the community and tell them, you have to resolve the issue. Next up that I'd like to discuss is Manomet. So Manomet has annual groundwater monitoring at eight different wells scattered throughout the site, and those are everything from total dissolved solids to volatile organic compounds to metals, and all the parameters that are required to be monitored and tested for are in Code of Massachusetts regulations, so they're all spelled out. It's very formalized. The methods in which those samples are collected are described by EPA, so they have to be collected in a certain way, and then from there, they actually go to a certified lab. So again, it's a very formal protocol that's done and followed. Manomet also has one annual surface water sampling for a water body, Long Island Pond behind the landfill, that also gets sampled. And again, back to soil gases, quarterly gas sampling, and also landfill gas vent sampling. And again, that's looking at methane and lower explosive limits, oxygen, hydrogen sulfide, and again VOCs. Those are annual and quarterly reporting, annual for the groundwater, quarterly for the, for the gas sampling, and all of those have to be submitted to the Commonwealth within sixty days of the sampling. So again, very formal process. Also at Manomet, the transfer station, which most people would be surprised to know, the transfer station gets inspected on an annual basis, and those reports also have to go to DEP. Lastly, we have the Cedarville landfill, which obviously there's been a lot of discussion about recently. That has semi-annual groundwater at six different well sites around the facility, and there's quarterly soil gas sampling there as well. Probably back in the two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen range, we installed gas monitoring networks at both of those landfills, Manomet and Cedarville, based on the fact that we were getting more and more migration of gas. So DEP came in, again, after sampling was done, and said, you need to expand your network. So that was done. Again, just another example of when something's found, that DEP will come back to the community and tell us that we need to do additional work. There's been a lot of discussion, as, as you all know, about what DEP would refer to as a potential new receptor. So anytime there's development in and around an existing landfill, they refer to that as a potential new receptor, and oftentimes, they will say to the community, you need to change your monitoring or add to it, mainly for soil gas, because methane will migrate through the soil. And so I know that there's been discussion with, between GPW and DEP about changing some of those or adding additional monitoring requirements, so that will be, continue to be discussed and formalized. And that could potentially be either replacing existing groundwater wells or adding new soil. soil gas monitoring. Also at Cedarville, there's been some discussion about potential solar at that site. We, my department is looking at solar potentially there. I'd say Plymouth is one of the few communities in southeastern Mass that has, we have, as I just mentioned, we have three landfills, none of which have solar on them. Kind of a rarity, but it's an opportunity to derive some clean energy, and we're looking at that. We're also looking at possibly leveling off the site to just make a bigger solar array. And there would be some benefits to that. Obviously, there'd be some revenue generation, but the, the real benefit would be, you'd be fixing the existing cap. Any deficiencies in that would be replaced, you'd have a fence around the site to prevent some of the dirt bike activity that happens out there, that is a potential damaging influence to the cap. And then any existing new wells or anything could be protected or added at that same time. So there will be more discussion about that as we move forward. There's no decisions made on either of that, about the import of soil or about solar. I think the most important thing to say to you all and the public about that is, it's being discussed, and we're going to continue to have those discussions, and there'll be public discussions in Cedarville. And any decisions about import of soil, again, to a landfill would have to be determined by DEP and approved. So that's not just a decision the town would make, that's something that we would need state approval for. We can't do that unilaterally, nor would we. And again, there could be some real benefits to doing that, not just for revenue generation, size of the solar array, but also increased monitoring and protection of that existing cap out there. With that, I think I can open it up for any questions you all may have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I saw Mr. Golden first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. David, thank you for the update. Specifically focusing on the Cedarville landfill. I just want to touch on the solar piece of it to start. I've worked in some communities where they've had solar arrays on their land, on their landfills and dump sites. I hope that in the negotiation phase, whatever, whoever we end up contracting with, there's some kind of clause that's part of it, that if the operating company decides to close up shop, that the array itself will be dispensed with properly, so that we're not left holding the bag on an inactive solar field.
I can assure you that in the draft language that we have, that is most definitely included in there.
Excellent. Thank you. In terms of the, the well sampling, have you, in Cedarville, has there, can you speak at all to the, the quality of specifically the waters?
I can't. I haven't seen those reports. It's not something that you typically go through our department anymore. I've not seen those, but I can tell you, similar to like the soil gas network issues, that if, if there is an issue out there and DEP sees that, they're bringing that to the attention and coming back to the town. And I'm not aware that we've had any issues with our landfill monitoring. I will say that when I began working with the town, I'll give you some contrast, a few years into my tenure, we had four notices of non-compliance on our landfills, including South Street. So when things aren't going well, DEP is, is following up with the community, and so much so that we had four back then. I'm not aware of any that are happening now.
Would DEP come to you?
They would come to probably DPW, which is responsible for overseeing the monitoring.
I see our DPW director is here. Are you aware of any recent history in that regard?
Bill Coyle, DPW director. I can tell you that the most recent results did indicate that there were no issues or concerns, and the recommendation was just, just to continue monitoring. So that was both for groundwater and gas monitoring. So they've identified no concerns at this point.
And are you aware of any recent history where there were concerns in that area?
Not that I'm aware of. I, I can say we are working with DEP relative to 71 Hedges Pond Road, depending on the ultimate construction there, where we would identify additional gas monitoring wells. So that's something that we're in discussions with them, but it wouldn't happen, I think, until construction is completed.
Yeah.
So they are aware of it, we are in communications with them, and we are discussing what we'll do in the future.
Yeah. I think the folks in Cedarville are particularly concerned about the water aspect of this. Is it worth doing any additional monitoring? Like, I know we're doing semi-annual, do we do quarterly or even more frequent testing?
We typically follow DEP's guidelines, and at this point, you know, semi-annual, and nothing has come back that would concern us to increase the monitoring. Certainly, if something does happen, they will point it out to us, that recommendation, just like with this development adjacent to the landfill, they are recommending additional gas monitoring wells. And they'll identify if there's issues, there's one well that they said had an obstruction. So we'll have to go in there and remove that obstruction on-site, and know if somebody put a boulder or something happened to it. But so, they will identify these things that need to be corrected, and then when they go back, they'll take additional samples there as well.
Well, I mean, I don't know where my colleagues stand on this, but I would suggest that we do additional water sampling, at least during this construction project.
We could look at that. We just entered into a contract with Weston and Sampson, so it's, the contract is $56,000 to provide the monitoring for all three wells. But we could ask them if we were to increase the monitoring, whether or not, what are their thoughts, what are their recommendations, and see what they, they think about increasing the sampling.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Iquinto?
And thank you both for this presentation. This was really informative. But just to follow up on what Mr. Golden was saying, when we were at South Elementary School last week, this was the hottest issue, was the quality of water in the, for the residents in surrounding the landfill. And even, you know, they would, concerns a quarter mile away from the landfill, and people wanting to do private testing of the, monitoring of the, of the, the well. So I would echo Mr. Golden's request for us to, to do something in addition to what you're already doing, because there, there were enough concerns that I think that if there was something more that the town could do to help people feel more comfortable, I think that would be awesome.
Sure. We will look into that. I'll also add that anytime there's new houses constructed that are south of the landfill, those are most likely going to be wells, so they have to drill a new well, they have to have it tested and sampled. So I would suspect if there was some, some indicator that there's something going on, that would be red flagged by, by the Board of Health. So that's also a benefit. And then I encourage people to test their water, and it certainly doesn't hurt to be proactive and test, test your well water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Bill Coyle, again. Thank you. I just want to build on what, what David has indicated, David Golden and Deb Iquinto. The, the meeting that we had, there was a great deal of attention on this question. Also, that was very helpful, the Assistant Town Manager pointed out, Silvio was able to point out some of the mapping that indicates where the water pressure zones are, where people can hook up to town water. But just one question, maybe David or you may know, obviously, people can hook up to the town water, but obviously someone might opt not to and continue to have a well in an, in an area of interest. As, as David indicated, the receptors, we might take a proactive stance with people in a zone around it to be, come up on, whether it's, they're going through the Board of Health for permits to put a well in, knowing that they're in a, in a, in an area that they should be aware and, and testing should be done. I don't know how we approach that, knowing how many private wells are in the area in which zoned out from the epicenter of this area that we're monitoring. Has there any been any consideration of kind of looking at the private wells in the vicinity of the area that we're testing, just to let the neighbors know that they should be testing on occasion, especially when they go to the Board of Health and they decide to get a permit to put a well in? As development grows around this area, is there anything proactive we can be doing to allow these newcomers to this area to know that they should be cautious about that?
So I can give you some, some general information in regards to that. So generally speaking, once a landfill is capped, that's typically when there's discussions about whether or not there needs to be any connections required to a municipal water system. You know, Carver is probably a great example. There were two landfills in Carver, where actually neighborhoods were connected to municipal water system in Middleborough because of groundwater issues. That has never been a formal requirement for Cedarville and, and since, you know, right around the time it was closed. There's nothing in the groundwater sampling that's indicating that's necessary now. I would also say just keep in mind one caveat, that these, these wells that are tested are in and around the landfill. Groundwater and well testing is very, you need to be really thoughtful about how you analyze that. So you could have a well down gradient of the landfill that might have issues, but it may not be attributable to the landfill, because that groundwater flow might not even be in that direction. So you really need to understand how groundwater, groundwater flow is moving, how quickly, when the landfill was initially capped, any initial plumes that passed, might have passed through that area are now gone. So you really need to be thoughtful about that. So just, just testing a groundwater well doesn't necessarily mean that it's directly attributable to a landfill or anything else. You really have to be very thoughtful in how you analyze those samples.
Yeah. Because I just, you know, as I indicated before, there's a great deal of growth in the area. There is proposals to remove material that change how the, the top areas act as, as water is introduced. So I'm, and, you know, I just, I mention it because the residents drew attention to it. I was just trying to think of proactive things that we could be doing in the neighborhood as, as it grows more dense in the area, as things happen to the top soil around it, always monitoring and being sensitive to what you just outlined, and letting the neighbors know.
Yeah. As Bill was just mentioning, it's just important that people know too, if they have a, a sense of where they live in relation to the landfill. One of the very easy things to always understand is groundwater in Plymouth is always moving towards the ocean, so if you, if you're not between the landfill and the ocean, that probably isn't moving anywhere near your home. So if that helps people think a little bit more, you know, calmly about any concerns, they can be cognizant of that.
When you look at the cone of influence or where things are going, that's something too. Just, you know, doing what you can to reach out to residents, to keep them on the same page of the level of monitoring you're doing, and the things that they can be doing. So thank you for that update.
So in terms of, and this is probably more for Bill, but in terms of the, the monitoring of the groundwater, because I, I agree with my, my colleagues that were present, there was a significant amount of interest in, in the testing of the groundwater and concern about that. And I think part of it was, part of it was the, sort of the fear of the unknown, because they don't, they don't know that we're testing it, how often we're testing it, they don't know what the results of that test are. So first and foremost, I think if we, so semi-annually, I assume that means every six months?
Correct.
Okay. So if we could look at what it would, what it would entail to do it quarterly, I think that would be beneficial, because that's what we're doing for, for Manomet. And I think, I think quarterly is a reasonable schedule to do it. I'm not a DPW professional myself, but it, it sounds like a reasonable time to keep track of an issue if and when one were to occur. And also, if we could get the, if, when we get the results of that testing, whether it's quarterly or semi-annually, if we could be provided that as the board, and then we could like give it to the Cedarville Steering Committee, which is very active in the area?
Sure.
Because I think there were concerns, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding, you're testing the area around the landfill. And there were some concerns about people, oh, yeah, you're testing around the landfill, but I live a half mile away from it, and I'm worried that something's going to pop up there. And I assume, you know, you're testing the circumference essentially, to make sure that nothing, if nothing is violating that border, let's call it, it would not get to half a mile out either, right? Because it wouldn't, there's no way for it to do that. But I think, you know, it's not, it's not enough for us to just do the work, we also need to be able to share that work with the people that are interested and concerned in it, about it. So if we could, number one, look at testing it on a quarterly basis, see what that would entail, and number two, work on the dissemination of that information when it becomes available to ease people's concerns. And that would help us not just with addressing people's present concerns, but as we prepare for the work that we're looking to do on the landfill with the solar field, I'm sure people will be concerned about, well, we don't even know what's happening with the landfill right now, whether it's going in the water, why would we do more work on it? So if we could, it's in our interest for the multiple reasons, but is that something that you think that the DPW could look into on, on those two issues?
Sure. I will reach out to Weston and Sampson, get a, a quote from them for a change order to the contract, and see what that cost is going to be. I'm sure somewhere within our budget, we can find the funds for the additional testing. Additionally, we'll look at how we can make those test results more available to the public, whether or not we just post them electronically online on the town website, and people can review them and take a look at them. You know, but one of the biggest things I always look at, I go right to the very beginning with the conclusions.
Yep.
That there's, there's nothing that, that was through the testing that indicated a concern from the results, and just recommend a continued testing. And so, and I know DEP is looking at the test results as well, and they're looking at what, what the different levels are, and is any increases that they should be concerned with. So there's, you know, numerous eyes looking at this, professionals that do it all the time. But I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I certainly want to make sure people feel confident that we are monitoring the groundwater. So I'll reach out to Weston and Sampson, and then we'll look, the best way to get the information out to the public.
Okay. No, I think that would go a long way in, in easing people's minds over the issue, both now and in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Just a, just a quick follow-up to that. You know, when you go to a, a steering committee in Plymouth, I've noticed the, the police department has an interesting program they're going, they're sending liaisons to sit in on the meeting and listen and seeing how they can engage that neighborhood on law enforcement and, and other questions that might come up. It's something that, that David and you might consider, that when this information is available, that there's an outreach to the steering committee to go and say, this is what we're getting for results. So, you know, maybe once a year, engaging the steering committee in Cedarville with the results of all the good work that you're doing, you need to get that information out to the steering area. That's one way of doing it, making, you know, making a point to go down there after you get your results once a year, to give them an update, just taking a play out of the book right now of what the police department is doing in terms of outreach, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Quinto?
I don't know who this question's for, but going back to South Street and the police station, are we still testing there, or is that all done and clean?
Uh, no. It still gets tested for, for methane. Yep.
Okay. And the second question is, did we ever decide if the county was helping us on this? I don't know how many are familiar with it. We had a little bit of a, we'll call it a disagreement between the town and the county because they were using the landfill. And then when these problems were discovered, you know, they played deaf to it. So I was just curious to see if there was any resolution to that, if they helped foot some of the bill, or if they're just, are we where we were before.
So they do not provide additional funding for any of the monitoring? And when that corrective action that I mentioned in the parking lot was performed, that was paid for by the town.
Okay. That's, I was just curious of that.
County likes to take our money but not give it back to us.
Sometimes. I just wasn't curious. So the real question seriously was the police station, and so it's still being monitored, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Golden?
Yeah, right.
All right. Any other questions from board members? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the update. All right. That brings us into the next item on our agenda, that is a special municipal employee designation review. This is for recreation beach pond supervisors. Anne Slusser applied but is not in that position. She's the recreation director. Anne couldn't join us this evening, but this is, this is a application that was submitted along with the ones that we reviewed earlier this month, but was sort of lost in the shuffle in terms of getting it from where it was sent to, to our office to actually be formally reviewed. So this is part of the annual SME evaluation as to whether or not we wanted to provide that for this particular position. So we talked about this at a recent meeting. Special municipal employee is to exempt the, the position from the state ethics laws in certain criteria for people in those positions. So they would, often it is someone that works for the town or is a, an appointed or elected official for the town who also wants to official for the town who also wants to be, to do something else in front of the town or for the town. So Ann couldn't be here, but did provide a written explanation as to why she wanted this position to have that status. And she writes, "It is in the interest of the town to grant special municipal employee status to the beach pond supervisor position, as this role is typically filled by teachers seeking summer employment who are also Plymouth residents, familiar with the local beaches and ponds. Their professional experience working with students makes them well-suited to supervise seasonal staff effectively. Additionally, their background in education equips them to communicate with patience and calmness when interacting with the public." So if they are a school department employee and they wanted to seek additional employment with Plymouth, they would need a special municipal employee status in order to do that. And I will leave it up to board members as to whether or not they believe Ann's reasoning is in the interest of Plymouth to have people have that on both sides. For me personally, when I analyze whether a special municipal employee status should be, granted, it's why is it in the interest of the town on both sides, both what they currently do and what they want to do with that status? So I would encourage others to look through it at that lens, but the ultimate conclusion that you reach obviously would be up to you. But that is the request from Ann Slusser for the recreation beach pond supervisors. Mr. Kohan?
So I, my thought there is just to recognize that Ann is requesting this, Ann Slusser's requesting it, but it, if, if it is awarded, it would pertain to everyone in that department.
Everyone with that specific position?
Specific position.
So only, so special municipal employee?
Right.
Status applies to everyone with a given position? So if it's, if it's one elected official out of one seat, then it applies only that person? But with something like this, anyone who is a recreation beach pond supervisor would have special municipal employees?
So her, her memo outlines that, which is good. Obviously, the summer help that's coming on, maybe teaching during the school year?
Right.
Doing this as outlined by Ann. I would just want people that, you know, they should be notifying the clerks in writing that there is this conflict. I think that that's important. If that we are going to grant this department this capability, I'd like that to, to be, you know, on record. So if there's a person that's going to be working in this capacity in that department with this title, that they're going to be utilizing this privilege, that they notify the clerk. There is a process where you're required to notify, but not required, it is recognized that you can. And I just would like to encourage them to notify the clerk that they're working in this capacity for the summer and they hold this position, just a simple notification so that at the clerk's office, that, that we know that to be the case. I just think that it would be helpful.
Okay. Any, Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we know how many of them there are and who they are?
How many of these positions there are?
Yeah, the supervisors.
Uh, let's see. Don't know offhand. Do you, Mr. Brindisi, do you have any idea how many recreation beach pond supervisors we typically hire in a given year?
We'll get that number for you right now.
We'll get that. We have the Commissioner of Health and Human Services in our audience. We're well attended by people that didn't expect they were going to be presenting on certain items. Any, any other questions while we're waiting for that? All right, Ms. Iaquinto?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I think that Ann's rationale makes perfect sense. I, and I, maybe I'm a little bit biased towards teachers since I am one, but I do think that teachers have the skills and competencies to do this job really, really well, and I think that it would be an asset for the town to have them in that, in that position. So I would, I would be comfortable voting in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, we are, we're awaiting an affirmative response on that. Mr. Kohan?
Just to make sure, I, I agree with Deb. This is a unique situation where we have a qualification that would be very helpful to the summer programming. My thought process would be that, that if someone is working this capacity for the summer, that they notify the clerk that they're working in this capacity and they teach in this capacity. So we're, it's on record and it's easy for residents to see and it's transparent.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, approximately seven.
Oh, here she comes.
Oh, there we are.
I had bubbles and then I have her in person.
All right, so, all right, so there are seven approximately. You may have a follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ann, welcome. Thank you for being here despite not being able to be here. I, do you know out of the seven, how many of them are teachers?
Uh, for Plymouth teachers, there's approximately three.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who, who might potentially have a conflict?
For beach pond supervisor? Um, I thought it was for the position, not for the person.
It is.
Correct, yeah. Out of the remaining four, do you think any of them would have any conflict?
No.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sorry.
And thank you. I know you were doing some bat testing.
Yeah, still going on, yeah.
I hope that, oh, it's still going on. I was going to say, I hope it went well, but unsure what it entails, but we'll follow up about that some other time. But in terms of, in terms of this position, do you often get like repeat hires that come back annually?
Yeah, so all the, the people in the roles right now are people that have worked for us like every year. So one of them's on his like 10th year.
Okay, all right. Sounds great. All right, any other questions now that we're joined in the flesh? Mr. Kohan?
So just to, to repeat what I said earlier before you came in.
Sure.
For the people that may have a conflict, would they have any problem with if they do recognize that, notifying the clerk's office in writing and just doing a simple notification during that short period of employment?
Do they have an issue with it? No, we send them the form to fill out and they do it online.
Six twenty-eight A or something, six, two sixty-eight A?
Yeah. Yeah, they send it to us for us to fill out, forward to them. I don't know the exact form number.
Okay.
But it is online, they send us the document.
Yeah, I saw, I saw some of that. I was just thinking that it, it didn't look like it was mandatory. Is it mandatory? Is it something that you require in your office or is it something at the pleasure of the employee to notify the clerk?
Usually they tell us that they're an employee of the schools and then we?
Give them the form.
Give them the form. Yeah.
And then where does the form end up?
It ends up in the clerk's office that then, like between Kate and Kelly, they?
So you're already doing it?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, wish of the board in regards to the request for special municipal employee designation for recreation beach pond supervisors. Motion to approve. Mr. Golden moves. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Ms. Iaquinto seconds. Any discussion as to whether or not we should approve special municipal employee status for recreation beach pond supervisors? If no one else does, I will say that, as I alluded earlier in my opening remarks on the subject, while Ms. Slusser was testing those bats, that for me, it's looking at whether the benefit to the town is achieved by both positions. So in the event of someone that is a school teacher for the nine or so months that they're doing that, obviously we're getting a benefit from them doing that job and they're transferring a lot of those skills to their role as a recreation beach pond supervisor as was laid out in Ann's letter of explanation. So I think, I think we do benefit from having school teachers that we've trained and, and have a relationship with these, some of these kids probably directly from their, their traditional day job and bringing them on board to utilize those skills in this capacity. So to me, I'm satisfied that there is a benefit to the town of Plymouth for the work they would do in this theoretical situation, both for the town of Plymouth School Department as well as for the Recreation Department. So I intend to vote in the affirmative for this particular status. Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, and we'll call for the vote. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kohan?
Yes.
Mr. Quintle?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous, we have approved special municipal employee status for recreation beach pond supervisors. That brings us into the next item on our agenda, that being the Plymouth Health and Human Services Community Health Assessment and Community Health Improvement Plan. And we are joined by Michelle Braddy, Commissioner of Health and Human Services.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Select Board Chair, Mr. Canty, Vice Chair, Mr. Golden, Select Board Members, Mr. Quintle, Ms. Iaquinto, and Mr. Kohan, and members of the public. I am Michelle Braddy, your Commissioner of Health and Human Services, and I would like to sincerely thank you in advance for your time this evening. The Plymouth Community Health Assessment, or CHA, it's very fun to say, and Community Health Improvement Plan, or CHIP, project represent another first for the town of Plymouth. Out of 351 Massachusetts municipalities, approximately only 20 individual municipalities and municipal coalitions across the Commonwealth have completed the CHA/CHIP process in its entirety. In addition, Plymouth will be the first municipality in the coastal Southeast region to take this imperative step towards planning for ensuring and protecting the health of residents and visitors. CHAs measure the health-related needs and strengths within a community. CHIPS operationalize data, CHA data, by bringing stakeholders together and creating a shared framework and action plan for meeting community health needs. The Plymouth CHA/CHIP will be key tools that the HHS department will rely upon to directly engage with community members, identify important needs and strategic priorities, make data-driven decisions about allocation of resources, and leverage funding opportunities through regional community partnerships. We call that CHA-ching. Just for the health community. See? All right, people are paying attention. We could trademark that, yes. The Plymouth CHA/CHIP project will empower the town of Plymouth to have ownership over identifying its own health priorities and strengthen the town's ability to make evidence-based decisions on allocating resources for our community. This CHA/CHIP process will allow Plymouth HHS to develop a five-year strategic plan using the most current public health data and methodology. Completing the CHA/CHIP process is also a prerequisite step for achieving local public health accreditation, which is the gold standard for ensuring health and human service departments meet their quality and performance goals, and it is a future goal of HHS. Since we will soon begin engaging in a series of public forums, we wanted to ensure that both the Select Board and the public have the opportunity to provide input for this historic process. We are absolutely thrilled to have with us tonight the expert consultant hired to complete this work on behalf of the town of Plymouth. Health Resources in Action, or HRIA, is a well-respected industry leader and expert in this field and has completed many CHA/CHIPS throughout the Commonwealth and the nation. Presenting to you tonight from HRIA to share an overview of this project are Donna Burke and Heather Nelson. Please come up.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us join your meeting. Looks like you have a busy agenda, so we appreciate that. So is this, this is the clicker?
It is.
All right, so we're, we're in business. So you set us up really well, Commissioner. I'm going to talk about HRA in a second, but I'll tell you a little bit about me and then Donna can jump in here. My name is Heather Nelson. I am the Managing Director of Research and Evaluation at HRIA. I have been there running the Research and Evaluation Department for just about 13 years. And before that, I was at the State Health Department for quite some time, so it's been 30 years or so that I've been working in public health. Donna, I'll pass it over to you if you want to chat real quick about you.
Thank you, Heather. My name is Donna Burke. I'm a Director with our Strategic Planning and Organizational Effectiveness Team at Health Resources in Action. I've been at HRIA also for just a bit over 13 years, and I've probably got another 15 or 20 years of strategic planning experience prior to that, before my corporate experience earlier than that. So been doing planning for a while and very excited to be doing it in the nonprofit sector for organizations such as your Health and Human Services Department.
All right, so let's talk about HRA a little bit. We are a nonprofit organization, as Donna just mentioned. We're a public health organization, a public health institute. We're a social change organization. We are based in Boston, Massachusetts. However, we do work across the entire country and our staff live across the, the country. However, Massachusetts is home, we both live in Massachusetts. So I think a little bit else about us, if you, I, I like to think of us as a public health one-stop-shop, really. You can see our vision and mission up here. But in terms of services that we offer, we provide research and evaluation. Obviously, what we're talking about tonight is related to community health improvement. We do health communications, health policy, we run the helplines for substance use for the state, so we do a whole bunch of things. Did I say there were 300 of us? So it's not just the two of us, there are 300. So we do all those things, no. So there are 300 of us across the organization. And I, you know, bottom line here, when we think about the work that we do at HRA, it, the vision and mission say it all. We, we really want to, and we do, work with communities and individuals and organizations to make sure that people can thrive and they're healthy and that they live in just communities. So that's, that's us in a nutshell. And I'll give it over to you to talk about.
We're playing pickleball tonight, going back and forth and back and forth. So this is our core project team. So as Heather mentioned, the HRA has a staff of over 300 individuals, but this is our core project team for your Plymouth CHA/CHIP, or CHA-ching, I like that. So I'll be the planning lead for this project and I'll be on the project from the get-go, but the majority of the action and the folks that you'll see out in the community in terms of the work coming up for the assessment will be led by Heather and the folks from her side of things. So Kevin Seer and Cassandra Javarez have been part of Heather's team from the get-go for the start of this project. Becca Tampowski as well, as other folks from our planning group will be working on this throughout the planning portion of the CHIP. And Abby Atkins is our Senior Advisor. Some of you may have met her at the Steering Committee kickoff meeting last month. So we've got, as, as Heather said, we've got over 300 folks to help us out and between just this team alone, we tried adding it up and we just rounded it to decades because we kind of lost track of adding it up. But definitely a few years of experience in both assessment and planning that we'll be bringing to bear for our work that we do for you. So Heather mentioned we do work across the country. We also have staff across the country. I can remember the day when there were just a handful of us who were considered remote employees. We now have employees, I believe in 40-something states, but we've done work in all the, 16 of the states. So the legend up here is, as you can see, the brighter purple color is where we've done both assessment and planning projects. The green is where we've done just assessment projects. The kind of magenta or lighter purple is where we've done just planning projects. And there's only 16 states that we have yet to, and so not, that we have not done, that we have yet, not yet done work in, and although we've certainly tried to hit Hawaii a few times, but the travel costs get a bit prohibitive on that. So we've done work across the country and we've done work with healthcare institutions, local health departments, state health departments, community collaboratives, as well as philanthropic organizations. So a lot of work with nonprofits as well as public health entities in order to do that. And?
One thing I was going to say too about the map, to add on to that, that, you know, we're talking about where we're from here, we still have a lot of staff here and we, we started here, we're homegrown from Massachusetts. But I think knowing and having the experience of working in other states, what it does is allows us to see, go out there and say what's going on in other places and not, you know, be able to bring those things back, but also share the great things that happened in Massachusetts. And we've done a lot of work here. I think, Commissioner, I don't know the exact number, but a lot of the assessments and plans you talked about across the state, we have actually done. So just a little bit about that. All right, lots of words on this state, on this state, on this slide. So apologies for that, but we wanted you to be able to read something in your packet. So really what this is about is why do this? I don't know how many of you are familiar with CHAs and CHPs, assessments and plans. If it's, if not obvious to you or, and you know, you haven't really heard of, about it before, it's, the Commissioner actually talked about a lot of these things. I think, you know, when people think about assessments and gathering information and then using that to form a plan, that is wonderful and that gives you a, a nice illustration of what's going on in your communities and communities within communities and gives you a nice baseline of information. And then if you want to collect data over time, you can, you know, see those trends over time and you have a roadmap when you have a plan, right? And you know if you, you, you're doing what you set out to do. I think the piece that folks don't think about quite as much that I would say is absolutely equally as important is when you engage in this kind of process, the assessment in particular, but also the plan, is that it's completely engaged with the community and the players. And so thinking- And so, thinking about HHS and the department and thinking that it's relatively new, it's a really good way, in addition to having, understanding your communities and having up-to-date information, but also being able to work with community players themselves, gain trust, start building relationships. I know you already have relationships, the Commissioner and the Assistant Commissioner, perhaps not in these exact roles, but really being able to engage and to hear from the community, so that it's a, it's a co-developed process, it is informed by what everybody thinks, and it's not just, you know, we don't roll in and say, oh, this is what you should do, because we don't actually live and work here, although I have worked here sometimes. So, little bit about, just a little bit about thinking about the why, and we can get into that later, too. I want to tell you a little bit about the assessment, kind of this first half, just a little bit more. So, we've kind of gotten into this, the goal of the assessment, the community health assessment, is to identify key needs in your community, assets, opportunities, right? What's going on here in Plymouth? Because this is a health assessment, it certainly is related to health status, also thinking more broadly about social determinants of health, right? This particular process, HHS has been thinking and kind of focusing particular attention around social drivers like housing, like mental health across the lifespan, like economic development, and thinking about connection to community resources. So, those are some of the things that have, we've been paying special attention to, in addition to all the other types of health indicators. So, the other thing I want to say to this bullet on the left, that I think is really, really very important, is this process will build off of and expand upon work that has been done here already, and everyone who has knowledge and expertise. This is absolutely not, we never do that, recreate the wheel. And I'll talk about the methods in a second. That's not a good resource, the use of resources for anyone. This is work together with the assets and everything you already have. And I did say assets upfront, but I do want to point out that all communities have assets, even the most disenfranchised, which is not you all, because you have a lot going on and you have a lot of resources, but really being strength-based and thinking about what you've already got here and building off of it. And again, being really aligned and thinking about what's already happened. So, in terms of the actual work that we're doing, kind of the day-to-day and the methods, we wanted to just point out that there is a Steering Committee that is already in existence. It's an important piece of the work we do, we think, because we want to make sure that, again, it's engaged with players who are in the know in this health advisory, this, this health space. And so, we have a Steering Committee who will be involved in planning and logistics and oversight. We will be collecting for the methods. We'll be collecting secondary data, so data that already exists. Like I said, let's not recreate the wheel. Those data we've started looking at, we will continue to do so. You know, that might be data that exists at the state level. It might be something that a local community organization, like your Community Action Council just put out slides, I was looking at this morning, on food, emergency food access. That's something we want to look at. We don't want to duplicate it. We want to know what exists. So, anything that already exists, we're looking at it, and it's kind of a snowball thing, where as we move forward, if people say, hey, check this out, so you're aware of this, we're doing that. For primary data collection, so data we'll collect that don't exist yet, we're gonna do a community survey. We've been working on that, and it goes through many thoughtful rounds and edits to really think through, okay, what do we really need to be in there? What are the questions that the community has? What are the questions that the Steering Committee has? What's the information that everyone needs that does not already exist? And so, we have been working on that. Also, let's be somewhat parsimonious. We, we don't want it to be burdensome to the community. We want it to be helpful and not take people's time, tons of their time. And we're also gonna do some qualitative data collection, so doing key informant interviews with leaders who could be representing a whole bunch of different types of things in the community, who, you know, are those kind of trusted messengers who have something to say because they work for, I'm making this up, we haven't decided any of these yet, you know, someone who works for BID Plymouth, someone who works for Harbor Health, or could be this gentleman over here, who knows about what's going on about law enforcement. So, those kinds of things, we've got to figure that out. And then we'll also, the resident discussions or focus groups will be talking to groups in actual community residence, which that will be decided probably, definitely guided by the Steering Committee, guided by the knowledge of HHS, and probably also guided, if we, the order of things, if we do some of those interviews first, that is also a really helpful process. And then, we put it all together, all of these things, and we clean and analyze those data, we synthesize, and then it comes out with a nice picture of, this is an illustration of what's going on in Plymouth, and here are the, kind of the key themes, and those will be used to plan, to make a plan that you can follow. Donna?
Then I get to come and have fun.
Yeah, well, you're around for the rest of it.
Whoops, wrong one. I'll be around for the rest of it, too. So, then we get to the second phase of the project, which is the Community Health Improvement Plan. So, again, the Steering Committee and the community will continue to be engaged throughout this portion of the project. And what a CHIP is, the Commissioner alluded to that earlier, is it, we take all of the needs that are identified in the CHA, in the CHA, and we decide what are those that are the most important to focus our efforts on in the coming year. And then we figure out a coordinated and collaborative way to address those needs, to achieve the maximum impact for the health of your community members. So, we're gonna continue to engage with the Steering Committee throughout the planning portion. We start out with a key findings and priority setting effort, so that'll be sharing what those key themes were that came out of the assessment, and talking about which are the handful of those that we really want to focus on. Everything that comes up as a need is important, but if we tried to focus on everything, we would have very little impact across a broad number of areas. So, we facilitate a prioritization process where we pick what are those three to four areas where we really need to focus, we really need to put some serious effort, hypercharge our activities and our collaborations around that to make a difference, because this is where the need is the greatest. Once those priorities have been set, we have some planning sessions set up, and that'll be broad engagement across all sectors of the community, as well as the town offices and such. We do that planning. Out of that will come goals for each priority area, objectives, strategies, potential partners that we'll work with. From those planning sessions, we then begin to develop the CHIP report, and there will be a lot of review and feedback. So, for those sectors that can't participate in the planning itself, we'll be reaching out and sharing the plan draft with them electronically, asking for their feedback. Is this feasible? Is something in this area already happening? So, again, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, so where there are already existing efforts that we can build upon, that we can replicate, that we can expand broader, or where there are new things that haven't been tried before that can make a difference. We take a lot of time to look at what's evidence-based, what's a best practice, what has been successful for similar communities, and we pull the folks in that really know what's happening in terms of the different areas of need that are in there. We'll be working with the Commissioner and the Assistant Commissioner to identify who those folks are, that we need to involve in those planning sessions, as well as who we need to involve in the finalization of that plan. Finally, last but not least at all, we'll be talking about pulling together a monitoring and evaluation plan. So, how are we gonna monitor progress? How are we gonna track the changes that are made? So, there's, here's what we said we were gonna do. Did we do it? That's tracking. Did it make the change we wanted it to make? That's that monitoring. How are we gonna see what things move from where they're at to where they go? Some changes take years before that actually shows up in the data. Other things can be much more immediate. So, we'll be looking at that through a monitoring and evaluation plan as part of the CHIP planning process. So, again, it's to convene and make sure that we take advantage of what the existing resources are, identify those themes that we want to address, and develop a plan so that we can coordinate our efforts, we can collaborate, we can not duplicate efforts, but instead pull together. So, ideally, this is being led by Health and Human Services, but this is a community health improvement plan. So, every nonprofit organization, every agency, anyone who is working with the folks who are impacted in the areas of need that are identified in the CHA, are folks that we want to have onboard, all pulling together in the same direction to implement the plan, to help develop the plan, and then also implement that plan. And that's where the greatest impact comes out. It's not looking to the ladies over here and saying, you guys can implement this plan, right? Let us know how you do. No, we want everybody onboard with that, that's working in these areas. And again, avoiding duplicating those efforts and combining those efforts and working together to make sure that we're getting the maximum impact from the resources, including people's time and energy that we put towards that. Whoops, I got it backwards, sorry.
There we go. Just a couple of words about customizing this for you, and I think we maybe got into this as we're talking, but a couple of things that you may know already, so I'm telling you what you know, but I think it's important to point out, thinking about Plymouth, you're unique. You know this. All communities are unique. You're unique in that you are the largest community in Massachusetts by landmass. You're large, and you're growing, right? You're growing in size, you're growing in diversity, so when you're thinking about assessment and you're thinking about planning to meet the needs of communities, those are important things. Again, I know you all know this, but just want to put this out here. And then the other thing, I think, the second bullet there in the left column is, is about how you're growing and kind of your, your population makeup, and I think, I know you know this, but you have larger, a larger proportion of folks who are over 62 years old, also older than 65, and, you know, heads are nodding, so in Plymouth, right? So, that's a particular group in the, in your community that's important to keep in mind, right? Thinking about who are all these kind of subgroups in the community. So, that makes you unique and something to think about, and also, of course, tourism, right? You have lots, you are rich with seasonal workers, you are rich with tour, I don't know if you consider it rich, with all the tourists coming into your space in the summer, I'm not really sure, and in the fall, but those are really important things to consider when you think about the fabric of where you live. And so, keeping all of that in mind, and I think I've maybe touched on a couple of these things already, but keeping that in all in mind, we, again, are engaging the Steering Committee to make sure what we do here makes sense for Plymouth. It's true to Plymouth, and I think I did talk about the different methods, the survey, and then thinking through when we're talking to communities and different community leaders, working with community-based organizations, other agencies, to really be able to make those warm handoffs and be able to work in the community in ways that work for people, and to be able to have a voice, really. We're almost done, I promise.
Almost done, I promise. So, project timeline here. So, this is about a 20-month project timeline. We started talking with the folks at Health and Human Services back in March. We had a project launch. The Steering Committee kickoff took place in June. A little red, the little red dot arrow shows where we're at today, in the throes of beginning our assessment work with the community survey, our secondary data analysis, and the qualitative data collection. So, we will have multiple check-in points with the Steering Committee, and so the next will be coming up here in early fall. There'll be another one when we are ready to share the findings from the assessment and begin to transition over into the planning portion of the project, and we'll have those planning sessions, spend a few months getting review and feedback, and finalizing that CHIP report, before we then get into the monitoring and evaluation plan to wrap things up. So, this is, is actually a more, a more thorough timeline than we usually get. Mostly, we get clients, they want to do it, they recognize the importance of it, but they're like, how fast can we get this done? And that's always disheartening for us to hear, because it's like, but we could, you know, we'd love to be thoughtful and thorough, and so I just want to thank the Commissioner and the Assistant Commissioner for engaging us with a process timeline that will allow us to have that thorough process, to be thoughtful, to engage with folks that we need to engage with, and, and really make sure that we bring a whole lot of folks onboard as we go along through the assessment and the plan, to then get on with the work of actually implementing the plan and improving health in the community. So, thank you for that. I did it again. I apologize.
Yeah, so, I think, last, last one?
Last one.
Last one, and then just a question slide. What have we done so far? We mentioned that we started in March. We have met with that Steering Committee. That was in the middle of June, so a little bit over a month ago, where we were talking about some of those things that I brought with the methods, you know, having them get to know each other, understand the process, and also really pick their brains and their expertise and knowledge, living here in all of their professional knowledge, figuring, hey, are there any of those data sets or information we should look at? Who are the community groups we might want to talk, talk with? We'll get into that more, too, as we move forward. And what are the questions? What are the questions you want this process to answer? What don't you know about where you live and work that you want to know, and there's not data for it right now? I think I mentioned we started working on the survey, and we are editing and crafting and narrowing down, so that's an ongoing process, and we meet with the department a couple of times a month. It seems like more than that, which is a good thing, so maybe a little more than a couple of times a month. So, we're very engaged, which is great. And next, I think it was all in the timeline there, and we pick out what is anything different. We're gonna launch the survey soon, but we want to get it perfect, make sure, again, not too long, right questions are asked, and, you know, for the survey, it will be online, but we can also do it via paper, because if you think about different folks in the community, people need it in different ways, right? Just so it's accessible. And so, we have plans to come to the Waterfront Festival, August 22nd, I believe, and be able to engage with some of the community there via surveys, and just kind of be engaged and be present there. And we have a Steering Committee in the fall to check in with them, and here's how we're doing. The survey can be left open for quite some time. Important to say, because as we monitor who's taking it, then we may say, oh, well, we don't have a voice from, I don't know, we don't have a voice from seasonal workers. So, do we want to keep it open longer? How can we collect information from this group in a way that's comfortable and safe? So, we haven't heard enough from folks who are retired here. So, those kind of things, so we can monitor that. And then we'll start that qualitative piece in the fall, reaching out and actually talking with individuals and community leaders. And, yeah, so we're off, and we're in the thick of it, and, and, you know, we've also been, I think, tried to be thoughtful in the summer. We're like, you're all really busy all the time, but busy in the summer here. So, we will wait until we get closer to the fall to really start engaging the community. So, that's, that's us, and that's the process. Thank you, and questions?
Okay, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I previously sat on the Board of Health, so I'm keenly interested in seeing what the findings are, especially the, the CHA. Between the CHA and the CHIP, will you be coming back to us to share some of your findings?
That's a yes. That is a yes, we will be coming back.
Excellent.
Happy to.
I look forward to it.
Yeah.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yeah, thank you very much. This is so exciting. Whenever this data involved, I get very excited. So, I did have a couple of questions, just to clarify exactly what you'll be measuring, because I think when a lot of people hear health assessment, they think, you know, incidences of disease in the community, and are you gonna be asking me what my blood pressure is? Can you just give us some examples of the kinds of things that you'll be measuring?
Yeah, thank you so much. That's a great question. So, probably won't get down to blood pressure. So, a lot of that secondary data that I already talked about, a lot of that already exists, right? Hospitalizations and the really kind of clinical things, which are important, right? Those are important. A lot of the types of questions that we're looking at for the survey right now, and like I said, it's not set yet, which is a good thing, which I would say, it's not set yet. So, if you have questions, I mean, you know, ask, and we can, you know, we can think about engaging and adding questions. So, for the survey in particular, you know, questions around housing, housing stability, housing affordability, questions around mental health, not particularly clinical, but some of those where, you know, those data may exist at the state, or they may exist clinically, but you can't get it down to the Plymouth level, which happens in all states. Again, it's not just Massachusetts, it's not just you, that a lot of the state data don't get parsed enough down to the level you want. I mean, depending on the numbers that we get from the survey in particular, that we may be able to look at, we're asking village, if the numbers are too small in some villages, we won't be able to do that. But, so, those kind of social determinants, quality of life kinds of things, I think we're, we're thinking about a, kind of a suicide question, because I know that's a topic, but a lot of those behavioral health kinds of things, in connection to resource kinds of questions, where there are things, questions and information that I can say, having done this for a long time, they're hard to come by, a whole bunch of data that gives you a good sense about your community. Does that help?
You may.
Yeah.
Just one more follow-up question.
Oh, yeah.
Do you guys, since you do this work across the country, do you have some sort of normative database that you can, that we'd be able to compare ourselves to?
That's a good question.
Or do you do any of that benchmarking kind of activity as part of this process?
So, in terms of internal databases, we do keep track of communities, what priorities they select.
Oh.
I'm sorry, up to the mic. We do keep track of, for all of the CHIPS that we do, what priorities are selected, what goals and objectives folks go after, and for clients that reengage us, we get to see how successful they were or were not in those. In terms of the actual data sets, much of it is already out there and collected.
Right, so I think it's, it's an excellent question. So I think it's, it's an excellent question. So I think when we think about those data we collect, particularly the quantitative data that would probably, that would be in the survey, and secondary data that exist, we want to be really thoughtful about, and we try to use measures and find measures that exist where you can, they already exist, the state already collects it, maybe, you know, if you can get yourself down to Plymouth level, depends. But things that you do have at your, at your town level, again, we won't reinvent the wheel, but we make sure that we use some standardized measures so you can pull them, assuming they're around in the future, you can pull them in the future. For our survey, exact same thing. We don't keep a big database, but we use some standardized measures so you can compare yourself other places in the country. And then the other thing, as I think I mentioned, in passing a baseline when you're thinking about this. So for things you really want to know, and you can't find those data anywhere else, ask that question now. And then thinking about resources and your plan, are some, maybe you launch the whole survey again in three years, depending on what it is and how long it takes to change. Maybe you cut down and only ask 10 questions in three. It kind of depends on what we come up with, but that, but definitely, we don't have it in-house, but we always make sure there are things that you can compare yourself outside and inside to yourself.
Thank you.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes. Deb may be excited about data. I'm excited about how you collect the data. So the logistics on the ground, you mentioned Plymouth is the largest town area-wise, and you are correct, it is a big town. And we're made up of areas and neighborhoods. We're a town of neighborhoods.
Yes.
And, and I think that your outreach might want to evaluate that process. I know that the staff is, is understanding of this, and they're probably guiding you on it, the importance of the outreach to collect this data that we should be looking at different parts of Plymouth. From North Plymouth to West Plymouth, to downtown Plymouth, to Manhamet, to Cedarville, to Chiltonville, to the Pine Hills, to Red Brook, into the Buttermilk Bay area, there are lots of different neighborhoods. We're like a microcosm. So you're going to be getting different data from different parts of Plymouth. So I'm glad you're at the Waterfront Festival. That's the waterfront. And we're going to be getting people from, regionally, you'll be getting information from people not from Plymouth. Is, when you, how will you engage them at the waterfront? Are you only looking for Plymouthians? Or are you taking information from anyone that comes through there?
That's a great question. I think we haven't really worked on exactly how we're going to launch it there and what makes the, you know, what makes the most sense here. I mean, we can also work with, I don't know, you know, I don't want to sign up your staff or local folks, but, so we can think about how that actually, how we do that. But there are screening questions, whatever the method is, whether it's, you know, at the Waterfront Festival or in person, or it's online, and, you know, a community-based organization sends it to the folks they work with, and so they can take it online, whatever that method is, we have screening questions so we will know if folks live here, live and work here, or just work here.
Right. And I think when, when you look at how you collect the data, and obviously, that is important to the results that you're going to come up with, that you look at these parts of Plymouth. You have the survey that's going out, that's another thing that needs to get out to as many people as possible through the community. And now there's multiple platforms where we can, I know that you'll address that. We want to maximize the effect of the survey, getting it to as many people as possible, and maybe even talking to town departments if they're doing mailings, and this could be some direction to go online and fill this out. I know during the master planning process, there was a lot of energy out there getting in there and filling out the survey. So we can, we've just came off a process that had that townwide.
Oh, great.
So you might be, like you said, don't invite, reinvent the wheel. The town is already doing something like this that you can tap into. So, you know, the other thing I just mentioned earlier, and it's come up a few times, not in this meeting, but other meetings, the, the steering committees across the town, there's nearly five of them that cover different sections of Plymouth.
Okay.
You know, it's something that the town of Plymouth established back in the 1970s by a director of, of the chairman of the planning board, the planning board back in the 1970s, a local architect here, David Crawley. He advocated for this village steering committee concept in the planning process. But as it has moved now 50 years later, these committees are taking a lot more, they're taking on a lot more responsibility. So I think they'd be very interested in hearing from you, because the meetings I've attended, they seem very interested in how they can play a larger role in the community, and this is somewhere where you don't have to reinvent the wheel, you can just plug in.
Yeah, no, that's great to know. Yeah, thank you for that, definitely.
All right. I have a couple of questions.
Oh, sure.
Myself. So we, based on some of the, the answers you gave about the data.
Yeah.
It sounds like some of the, although I encourage you to get your own data on the subject, we are also engaged in two massive master planning processes at the moment. So we're doing a townwide master plan, and we're also doing a master plan for the single largest undeveloped parcel in Plymouth, which is where the former nuclear power station was located.
Okay.
And that data includes some demographic data, as well as where people work in terms of who, because there's a lot of people that, it's like, I forget where, which is the 70, which is the 80, but, but 70% of Plymouthians, I think, that live in Plymouth work outside of Plymouth, and 80% of our workforce lives outside of Plymouth, for example. I've, I've seen some slightly different data in the two different master plans about that, but it still paints a picture of, you essentially could either live here right now, or you could work here, but for very few people can you do both.
Okay.
So that is obviously of concern to us in, in planning things for our future, and not just our health, but our sort of viability long-term.
Yes.
So to the extent, get your own data, of course, but also, I hope you'll be able to interface with those other data sets, so that there's a more comprehensive overview of those things.
Absolutely.
Things that are of interest to me in, in type of, in assessing the future of our community, its health and well-being, would be issues related to aging. We have a large population of people over 55 in the community. We're adding about 750 to 1,000 people a year, and often, based on the economics, they are on the older side, because in order to buy a house in Plymouth, you need to have some money you're bringing to the table, or access to resources that a lot of younger people don't have yet, which is another issue.
Yes.
But knowing, you know, predicting, being able to get out ahead of some of those issues that we're going to see with an aging demographic like that, a significant amount of our population being in that demographic would be important in terms of our medium and long-term planning efforts.
Yes, yeah.
The issue, you brought, you mentioned affordability.
Yes.
That's of particular interest to me. You mentioned people in unstable housing situations or the unhoused, obviously that's important. Seniors are often brought up in that conversation as well. Being able to age in place is important. But I think what is often left out of those conversations, and I've been trying to bring it more into it of late, is younger people that can't afford to buy a home here.
Okay.
So we have a lot of people that grew up in Plymouth, that would like to stay in Plymouth, but they're unable to do that.
Priced out.
Yes. And we're, you're seeing that on the Cape already, and you have for a while, but you're seeing it more and more in Plymouth. I think it's of concern to the long-term viability of Plymouth as a, as a town and as a community specifically, because the town of Plymouth will be here regardless. But what that town constitutes is subject to change. And if you have people in their 50s or 60s that have a 25-year-old that's recently out of college, wants to move out of mom and dad's house, but can't, it's very difficult for that family to see a future for themselves in this community.
Right.
Whether, and even if they'd like to, which many of them would like to stay here, they're not able to see themselves. And that affects, you know, obviously their quality of life, their long-term decisions, but also affects things like their community engagement. It affects their connectivity with the community around them, because they just can't see a way to move us forward. With so many of our residents working outside of Plymouth, you also have a lower quality of life and a lower level of civic engagement, because Plymouth for a lot of those people is their bedroom, not really where they live, because they spend so much time at work, or they spend time running errands on the weekends. But if you have an eight-hour day at the office, two hours of commuting on each end, you got a 12-hour day, you're probably not tuning into a select board meeting at night, right? You're probably doing something else, because Plymouth to you is just a zip code. So that, I have concerns about particularly the 25 to 35-year-old demographic being able to buy a home in this community, because you know, you had the old model of you'd grow up, you'd go to college, or you'd go into trade, or something else, you'd rent for a little bit, and then you'd buy your first house, right? And I don't think that story plays out very often in Plymouth anymore. And that's of concern to me, at least. So anything we could do to, we're trying to address that in some of those master plans that we talked about.
Okay, yes.
But I do think it goes to the health and long-term viability of the community as well, because if we lose our current residents and their successive generations, and you change a lot of the character of Plymouth, because a lot of people talk about the character of Plymouth in our historic buildings and our, our history, but it's our people that are the most valuable resource that we have. And that is what makes Plymouth up. So to me, doing what we can to retain is those that wish to stay here. Some are going to want to move on anyways, that's part of life. But for those that want to stay, I'd like to see a better path for them to be able to do that. And then lastly would be an issue related to, I don't know if this is something you could address, but the level of connectivity that residents have with their government in terms of knowing how they want to interact with their government. Because we have, because of our demographics, you have an older population that like print media, which doesn't really exist anymore.
Yeah.
And other more traditional forms of, of media that are cost, like, they'd like broadcast TV.
Right.
Right? But we can't be on Channel 4 all the time, right? Then you have sort of a middle demographic that's okay with some online news sources, they're okay with some cable, they'll watch us on the local scene, they might stream us on YouTube, they're more connected in that way. And then you have a younger demographic that is very online and engages, but engages with that online content in a very different way than that middle demographic.
Right.
And we need to be able to disseminate information clearly and cohesively to as many of our residents as possible and meet those people where they are. But in order to do that, we need to know where they are and where they want us to talk to them. So to me, that's, those are very important in terms of, anything that the government in this town wants to achieve, we need to communicate it to our residents, and we need them to be able to communicate their issues to us as well, because we don't know everything that's going on, and we want them to feel connected as well. So to the extent that you could address that, I would appreciate it. And then I guess lastly, for Michelle, I would ask, like, do you, do we have an estimate of the overall cost of the, of the CHA CHIP program at this time? And is that a finite cost, or is it something that varies depending on the level of depth or something? If you could expand on that.
Sure. Thank you so much. We have already procured the amount that this is going to be. It's $150,000. It's ARPA funding that was approved by the Select Board months ago during this process. So that is, the funding is secured and ready to go, as they say.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation. Any other questions from board members? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that feedback. Yeah, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
You know where to find them, if you think of other things you want to know, because we do want to know.
Absolutely. We will be.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night. That brings us into our next item on our agenda, that being the 25 mile per hour, thickly settled townwide versus road-by-road item. We are joined once again by Director of Public Works, Bill Coyle.
Okay. Good evening again, Bill Coyle, DPW Director, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Also with me this evening are Rick Bossy, Acting Town Engineer. He will do a brief presentation. And also the Deputy Chief, LeBretton is here to answer any questions relative to police enforcement. And before Rick starts, I just want to touch base on a couple of things. What you'll see repeatedly is a reference to statutory speed limit and regulatory speed limit. For most people, if you think of statutory, that's what I refer to sort of as the default speed limit. It's when we, we all received our driver's license, we were taught that if you're in a thickly settled area and it's not posted, it's 30. If you're in a rural area, no houses, not posted, it's 40. If you're in a divided road, not posted, it's 50. So those are your statutory speed limits. And then the other thing you'll see that we reference in the presentation is regulatory speed limits. So a regulatory speed limit is based on 85th percentile. And over time, I'm sure some of you have had presentations from DPW or the police requesting a certain speed limit. So you have to measure the speeds of what vehicles are traveling after a 24-hour period, and those people are all voting members on what the safe and reasonable speed is for that road. And the national standard on the MUTCD is that 85% of the people are driving at a safe and reasonable speed. Now, not sure of that assumption, it's been 85% for many years. Once the Board of Selectmen approves that speed limit, that would then go to the state from MASTOT for approval. So that would be a speed regulation. Typically, what you'll see those, that type of speed, if you see a 35, 45, 55, those are typically going to be a speed regulation, because they're not the statutory basically default speed limits. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick to go through the presentation regarding the thickly settled reduction from 30 to 25 miles per hour, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Good evening, Chair, members of the board, members of the public. My name's Richard Bossy. I'm the Acting Town Engineer. I'm here tonight to present to the board the proposal to enact a townwide statutory speed limit reduction for thickly settled roadways in business districts within the town of Plymouth from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. To elaborate on what Bill just discussed with regulatory and statutory speeds, regulatory speed limits, which are posted with typical black and white speed limit signs, these regulatory speed limits are determined through engineering studies conducted by the municipality and Mastod. The studies involve analysis of existing traffic conditions, speeds with vehicles are traveling, accident data, and roadway characteristics, with the overall goal to establish a speed limit that are both safe and reflective of the actual speeds at which motors typically travel. Statutory speed limits are primarily determined by the type of road and its location within a specific, with specific limits set by state legislature. The act, they act as default speed limits, as Bill noted, established by law. These speed limits apply even without posted signage. As noted in Mass General Law, no person operating a mass motor vehicle on any way shall run it at a rate of speed greater than is reasonable and proper, having regard to traffic and the use of the way and safety of all the public. Typical statutory unposted speed limits range from 50 to 20 miles per hour. As Bill noted, 50 miles an hour on divided highways, 40 miles per hour outside of thickly settled areas, 30 miles per hour currently in thickly settled areas and business districts, and 20 miles per hour in school and safety zones. Please note, these statutory speed limits do not apply to roads that have a posted regulatory speed limit or special speed regulations on file with Mastod. Thickly settled areas are defined as roadway areas where houses are spaced an average of 200 feet apart or less for a minimum distance of a quarter mile. Business districts are defined as a roadway devoted to businesses that are closely situated. In 2016, state legislation was passed allowing towns and cities the option to implement a reduced speed limit of 25 miles an hour in thickly settled areas or business districts on a townwide basis or a street-by-street basis. In 2022, Plymouth's Fall Town Meeting approved Article 15 to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17(c) in the interest of public safety, and voted to apply it on any way that is not a state highway. Reducing vehicle speed is crucial for safety. In essence, slower speeds mean more time to react, shorter stopping distances, and a reduced likelihood of severe injuries or fatalities, particularly for pedestrians and cyclists. Tonight, we ask the Select Board to authorize the implementation on a townwide basis. Mastod also recommends implementation on a townwide basis to avoid confusion with drivers. The town of Plymouth DPW and Police Department also recommend implementation on a townwide Overall, the town has approximately 2,200 roadways. A townwide basis would affect approximately 1,500 roads within town. However, the town does have the option to implement the street, oh, sorry, implement the speed reduction on a street-by-street basis. Currently, 99 towns and cities have opted in to the reduced regulatory or statutory speed limit of 25 miles an hour. Out of the 99 towns that have opted in, 18 have done it by a street-by-street basis. Surrounding towns, Bourne has not opted in to the reduced speed limit, Carver has not opted in, Duxbury has opted in on a street-by-street basis, Kingston has opted in townwide, and Wareham is also opted in townwide. If, if we do get a vote tonight for implementation townwide, the first order would be Engineering Engineering Division would create a map showing the existing regulatory speed limits and also the statutory speed limits, so they're easily defined and correct. Because there's old, there's going to be a lot of roadway, say Long Pond Road, where you get sections and stretches of houses, and then it opens up to where you get out of a thickly settled area. So we got to do our due diligence and, and check everything. Would have to install new signage at all entry points into town. There'd probably be about 26 signs would have to be installed. And there's an example of the sign at the end of the presentation. Existing thickly settled signage would also have to be changed out from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles an hour. Right now, we have a count of about 15 signs that would need to be changed. Once that's done, we'd have to notify MastDOT of the town's intent, whether it would be a townwide or a street by street basis. The town and Police Department would conduct a public information campaign to make sure motorists are aware of the change prior to, prior to the initiation of enforcement.
Does anybody have any questions? Questions from board members? Ms. Iacquinto?
Yeah, so thank you very much for this presentation. You actually answered a couple of the questions that I had noted before, before the meeting began. But, so you said there were 1,500 streets out of approximately 2,200 that would be affected? So in the areas of those streets that would be affected, those are all currently at 30 miles per hour? And they would just be going to 25 miles? So we wouldn't be taking something from 50 to 25?
No. Anything that has a posted speed limit with, you know, a typical black and white speed limit that's established, this does not change that. We'd have to go back to MastDOT, do another study to, if we wanted to change something that was a 40 mile an hour and incorporate it into that, we'd have to go get the proper approvals and studies and make sure it would, you know, conform to MastDOT's requirements.
Okay. And I see that the recommendation from the town officials is to do this townwide and not on a street by street basis. Is there a rationale for that?
Well, when you start off street by street, it's, where's it going to end? And then the signage and trying to, if all of a sudden we have to go post 1,000 out of 1,500 roads, it's going to be a lot of cost. It's going to be a lot of time. And, you know, I think you're constantly going to have, well, can you add my road to the list? So I think, you know, if we start off implementing across the board, would be the way to go.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? If no one else, I have a couple. So do we, it's 1,500 of 2,200 roads, approximately?
Approximately, we, we did a preliminary thickly settled map. We still have to go through and check distances between structures and confirm the existing posted speed limits that are in town. We have a general map of all the speed signs, but we have to check the recorded book that, you know, logged in with the Police Department and everything, and make sure that all the signage that is out there is following what has been approved.
Okay. Do you know the approximate mileage of the affected roads? We have approximately, I think, 380 miles of roads in town, but I don't know how many of them.
Not, not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. I guess, I, I think the townwide idea makes some sense because of what you're talking about, and it's consistent throughout different areas. So you would have less of the, oh, what's the speed limit on this street versus where I just was, and et cetera, et cetera. Also, the idea of going road by road through 1,500 roads sounds unpleasant. However, I do think changing all of that at once is also a, a big ask for some people to swallow. And so I guess my preference, and I'm just one of five, but my preference would be, would it be possible to do, out of your, with an affirmative vote, the next steps are, number one, you have a, create a map showing those streets with a posted regulatory speed limit and create a list of streets that fall under the statutory speed limit for thickly settled and business district? Could we do the map step first before we vote? And then see?
I don't see why not.
And then like have a list of these? I know 1,500 roads is a lot, but that way people could look and see if their road or the roads they use every day are going to be affected by this.
Correct.
And then they, if they had input, because there might be, it's a, there's a lot of roads in Plymouth, obviously.
Absolutely.
And I know when, like when Precinct 3 did their downtown traffic study, one of the reasons they did the area that they did, the downtown and North Plymouth section, was to avoid like unintended consequences in that. And I think doing a townwide avoids some unintended consequences. But I, to the extent that we're able to get out ahead of other unforeseen unintended consequences, I think it may be beneficial to at least have an additional step where we give people a notice and an opportunity to be heard in the event that there's considerations that we're not factoring into as to whether certain roads should not be included in this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, perfectly okay with me. I mean, if Bill's on board, I mean, we can generate the map and have the board review it or make some type of public announcements.
I'm just trying to think exactly how we're going to present that data. I think it's a good idea. We can certainly do that. But if we have 1,500 streets, certainly we can't have a list of streets. We can have a map color coded, but I think it's going to be somewhat overwhelming to present. We can have people, they can look at it, maybe post it online, so they can kind of zoom into their street. So I think it's going to be difficult to present, but we'll figure out a way to do that.
Maybe you could divide the town up into its precincts? And then we could have, you could have the map in each precinct, what's impacted? And we could post that online? And maybe we could disseminate it to the chairs of each precinct for them to get feedback from their residents if we wanted to?
Sure.
I, people may, it's a five mile per hour reduction, so I, I don't know that people are going to come at us with pitchforks, but there may be some things that I'm not anticipating, that I just, I, I know when this was presented to town meeting in the past, in 2022, there was conversation about, you know, a public hearing, and there'd be an opportunity for input. And obviously, this is a public hearing. But I think it may be beneficial to have it be a two-step process rather than a one and done.
Sure, no, I, I agree. And I think it's just, it's going to take a little bit of time, because we have to look at, and I know that Rick was going to do this anyhow. It's just that maybe what's going to happen is he'll have to, we'll do this now and not after the fact.
Yes.
So it'll be, because my, the thing that we have to look at is any speed regulation that was approved by the Select Board that went to MastDOT and was approved, and say that's 30, that would stay at 30. Because to get that, to change that, you have to go back to the state to change it.
Yes.
So one of the, one of the exercises that Rick's going to have to go through is every speed regulation that's been passed, go each one of them and look at it, and that's going to stay 30. So we'll, we can work on that. I know it's going to take some, Rick, some time, because he's juggling a lot of things. But we'll bring that back to the board, present that, and get that information online as well.
That would be my personal preference, but my colleagues may feel differently. But I, I appreciate the ability to do that if that is the wish of the board. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Iacquinto?
Yeah, I, I feel like that, that would help us make a more informed decision. But I'm, and I'm getting a sense that there's really no sense of urgency around this.
Only as urgent as the residents want to have it enacted.
Okay.
It's been, you know, it started in 2016, town meeting in 2022. So there's definitely been some space between, you know, when it was presented to the, you know, members of the town and town meeting that, you know, to give them an update now with a, with a map and who's going to be affected is a good idea.
Okay, so we're just, we're not exasperating and exacerbating any public safety concern by delaying a vote?
I mean, it's only as good as people that are following the signage, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank you, folks, for the presentation tonight. I would, I would agree. I think if we were able to see the direct impact that this, this would have, it would help us to make the decision. So I'd agree with my colleagues that I'd like to see that.
Absolutely. We'll start getting working on it. And once we get something, you know, ready to, you know, present and post, we can let you know and set up a meeting and go from there.
Okay. Any other, Mr. Cohane?
Again, thank you very much, Rick and Bill. And it's important that you note that in 2022, we started this process. Obviously, we want to compile this information and provide it to the residents, so they'll know in advance. But also, as, as the chairman has pointed out and the other board members, I think this would be very helpful for us and the residents to see the areas which will be impacted before we make the final call to move forward. Just one other question. When we do move forward, the signage, how will that be? You're going to have to go out and do a lot of signage work.
So the, I believe there's about 26 signs like that that have to be posted at all entrances to town. So on, on and off the off-ramps from the highway, South Meadow Road to Carver, Heron Pond Road down in Bourne, 3A coming in and out of Kingston. If you go into Kingston, you'll see one of these signs posted as soon as you pass, you know, Cottage Park and enter into Kingston there. So there's about 26 signs there. I believe there's another 15 to 16 existing posted thickly settled signs that have 30 miles per hour. Those would have to get changed to 25. And then whether or not we can implement or put, you know, entering a thickly settled area sign. So it kind of gives people a heads up you're getting into a, you know, a heavily residential area, you know, you know, watch the gas pedal.
So you've, you've already made this analogy, this analysis of how many signs you're going to have to put out?
We have a.
How many signs you're going to have to change? So you're on top of that.
So we, I put together a map just kind of depicting the, the town entrance signs.
Yep.
We had a consultant, I think, beta engineers that put together a sign inventory map for us.
Oh, good.
And granted, it's a draft one. We still have to go through all the speed regulations that are on file.
Okay.
Confirm that nobody just went out and placed the sign.
Yep.
That everything follows those regulations. And then we can define the rest of the thickly settled areas. So definitely going to be some legwork and paperwork to go through, but I want it to be right. And so don't the, you know, Police Department and everybody else, so when they enforce something, you know, they know they're standing on something solid.
Right, put everybody on proper notice. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Mr. Quinto?
I have one for Captain LeBretton. Our Deputy Chief, I apologize for the new title. That's right. We hear about moving the signs and the town's good for having laws. Enforcement is going to fall in your category. Being shot the number of offices we have already, how much actual time are we going to seriously be able to put into this, even if it is implemented across the town?
Yeah, it's a reasonable question for the record. Jamie LeBretton, Deputy Chief of Police. So the staffing level is what it is. Hopefully, it's on the rise here shortly. Really, nothing changes for us, except the fine amount that we would impose on drivers. The slide did indicate that the Police Department would undertake some education. You know, anytime there's a change in the law or regulation, before we go out and start to issue citations or, or, you know, act on the law, we'll go out and engage the community. If we stop drivers for an infraction, first step is to educate for a period of time so that they understand that the speed limit changed. You know, timeframe, it could be up to 90 days, you know, two or three months, you know, of education. And then we'll make the decision that, okay, now we're going to enforce and issue citations. So, you know, the staffing level is a moving target. So, you know, it's, traffic issues in this town are an important issue to address. Our officers are out there every single day doing that. But obviously, that's all impacted by how many offices we have on the street and what the call volume is, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Did you, if, if our wish was to do it the way that I suggested and that my colleagues seemed to be okay with, would you want to vote to proceed with step one at this point? Or are you okay with just taking that as the takeaway?
I mean, we could just continue it or just take that step and, you know, come back before the board when we're ready.
Okay, all right. I think that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so that brings us into the next item on our agenda, that being a public comment. Do we have any members in the room? Mr. Cirque?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Rich Cirque.
Is your mic on?
Rich Cirque, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. This is the fourth time in the last 13 months that I've publicly urged the board to take action to demolish the abandoned Burt's Restaurant building. Yet, nothing has been done. Over and over, I've set forth the steps needed to do so under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 139. They are, one, hold a public hearing with notice to the owners for the purpose of voting to direct the Director of Inspeccional Services to make a complete inspection of the building to determine if the building constitutes a public nuisance under Chapter 139. Two, after the inspection report is submitted, hold a second public hearing, again with notice to the owners, for the purpose of voting to determine whether or not the building does indeed constitute a nuisance, and if so, to order its demolition. Three, issue an RFP for the demolition of the building. And four, seek funding from the Finance Committee, if necessary, to pay for the demolition, the cost of which would then be added to the real estate taxes due from the owners pursuant to Chapter 139. So in the end, this would not cost the taxpayers anything, because the cost would be paid by the owners of the property. It's not necessary to enact a demolition bylaw to accomplish this, because state law already authorizes it. Now, we've been told for years that a project is in the works for this site by a proposed buyer. buyer. That buyer will undoubtedly need approval from the zoning board. And the first argument he will make to the zoning board will be that approval of his project will start with the removal of this eyesore. It's time to decouple the demolition of the existing building from approval of a new building. If this is done, then the buyer's project can be weighed on its own merits and not on the basis that it will begin with the demolition of the existing building. I hope that later in the evening, under the new business section of your agenda, a motion will be made to add this matter to the agenda for your next meeting a week from tonight. I want to add with this.
You have exceeded three minutes. Would you like an additional minute to conclude your comments?
Yes.
Or would you like more time than that, which would require an affirmative vote?
Just one minute.
One, one minute is fine. Go ahead.
I want to end with this. In 1999, six Worcester firefighters lost their lives in the course of responding to a fire in an abandoned building. If, God forbid, the same thing happens at Burt's, who will bear the responsibility? This building is a legal nuisance, not only because of its appearance, but also because of its threat to public safety. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public in physical attendance? Yes.
It's on. Good evening. My name is Kate Brown and I am a resident at, in Precinct One. I'm, I just wanted to suggest, in addition to Bill Cohane's suggestion, that we make the census document look a little bit more official. I also want to recommend that we look at it for readability for persons who need accommodations, especially when we see data statistics that a segment of our population, nearly 30%, is over 62 or 65. Lots of vision impairment in that segment of the population. So the other suggestion I have is that most persons in need of accommodations, not just vision, but others, use helpers. And there's no place on that form for them to designate a helper to help them respond to it. I mean, we obviously have a very significant problem of, you know, the inactive voters in this town. And I'm just trying to think about ways that we can try to either segment it out and figure out where we need to go to help or, but in any event, I do think that it's in need of some readability upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lyden?
Steve Lyden, I got a phone call today from the Plymouth Independent questioning me about the trip to Japan. They had a lot of misinformation about how the, was funded, who was going, how they, the delegation, how they were picked to go. Basically, I told them about the funding, but it seems like not only misinformation, but they didn't have enough information on it. I think that this trip to Japan and the sistership, the sistership relation should be more publicized and more open to the public. That was my first statement. My second one, I have to tell you that I'm very upset and very angry with the Plymouth Housing Authority. About five or six years ago, a great man named Ken Buks got this community outraged that the people at the housing authority could not have air conditions. And we finally got air conditions put in and then finally they decided to cut holes in the walls and put permanent air conditions in. While we were doing this, Connie DeLeo from the senior center called us up and said, you know, there's a senior woman down at Castle Court who's really suffering with the heat. So Kenny and I went down, we saw the situation, we got air conditions, we put it out to the public. I'll tell you, the residents, the businessmen were fantastic. 50 air conditioners were donated. And then one day after their shift, their midnight shift, the police showed up with donuts and coffee and they started installing them. Not only that, the fire department, Worcester ambulance come down with three ambulances and they started putting air conditioners in, residents, union officials. I called the housing authority and they told me, no, you know, the, because I went down the other day and there's very few air conditioners left, they told me, no, they're not going to replace them. If somebody wants one, they can go buy one and have it professionally installed. These people are on fixed income. The heat index is going to be 100 degrees. Those apartments are about 100 degrees. Most of the people in there are senior and elderly. So heat exhaustion is something that probably could very well likely happen. And, you know, it's not on their budget, but we did spend a lot of money to refurbish the Oak Street School for three apartments. You know, I can't understand why they can't come up, you know, with some air conditioners. They told me that, oh, if somebody wants one, they could call and we'll refer them to Oak Colony Elder Action and maybe they could help them. But, you know, you know, maybe someone could buy him for them. This is not, you know, we all care about housing, but if you're not going to have housing that's safe and goes to the health of the residents, what the hell good is it?
Mr. Lyden, you have exceeded three minutes. Would you like an additional minute to conclude?
I'd just like to say that, yes, I would. Thank you.
You are.
I would just like to say, I don't know what to do. You know, I've, I've called the elder service in Cape Cod and they basically have their hands tied. They're on a budget. But, you know, it's really sad that we're putting our elderly in this condition where they could suffer from heat stroke or heat exhaustion. They're afraid to say anything because they're afraid of the housing authority. Castle Hill, I went down to the, their cooling station. There was nobody there. I knocked on the door and there was nobody there. This is during the day and I was told that a lot of the, the residents don't want to walk there because it's too far to walk in that heat to go to there. So I just want you guys, just want to let you and the public know what's going on with the housing authority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyden. Any other members of the public in physical attendance? Mr. Machado?
Good evening, Butch Machado. I guess I was here a few weeks ago and perhaps some of you might have felt I might have been over aggressive. And, well, you know, that's the way it is when it involves the health and safety of my members, other union members, and the public. But, you know, it's been quite an education process because we're dealing with a company, I believe, out of New Jersey with some of our samples. And if you remember correctly, the old MBO building, when we purchased that, I remember it, the vote got overturned, it got denied on a Saturday and overturned on a Monday. It was the time that Hollywood Studios was coming to town. I don't have to say no more. But that being said, I remember it was a dusty mess and of course, being a sweeper operator, me and Eddie Bent was sent in there daily to clean it up. Then Jimmy Ward and me, because Jimmy took Eddie's position, and then all of a sudden in 2016, we were told to never sweep in there again. No reason given, it was either 15 or 16, just told not to sweep. So when talking with our discussion with our lab down in New Jersey, I think it is, they told us, well, that's not possible for crystalline silica to be out of the air when it was a concrete manufacturing outfit. They said, what type of machine was used? You see, when you do these clean air tests, there's only one machine that tests for crystalline silica and its real actual amount. Other machinery will pick it up if there's an excessive amount, but there's only one machine. It's called a parallel particle impactor. So, you know, where some people are upset, I spoke with my E-Board and with the union and we're willing to take on the cost to bring this type of machine in to test the air over at the MBO building. And I'm going to give you a chance to redeem yourself and prove that I was wrong when I said that the town and its administrators don't care about the health and safety of my DPW employees and everyone else. So I'd like, where you're the custodians of the town property, I would like you to vote to allow us to bring this machine in to test the air quality. You know, it's crystalline silica. We've had members that have retired from the water department that have died of cancer. We have members still in there complaining of breathing problems and everything and people say they're crybabies and stuff. So I'm giving you guys a chance and you ladies, and you as well, Deb, a chance to redeem yourselves and put the health and safety and welfare of my people and other people and the public who uses their building by allowing the union to put this testing equipment in their building. And I thank you.
You are over, you are over three minutes. Would you like an additional minute?
I, I would. I got one more thing. I'm sure that you're all in receipt of the letter that the union sent regarding that generous Fourth of July early release for, on the third, well, some of the members, because they were already out or some of our people have to work because they have mandatory jobs, water treatment, sewer treatment, rubbish, the dump and everything. I'm hoping that we can put that to bed and you'll give the town managers some direction so that the members that did not get that time off will be awarded that two hours. And I thank you and look forward to hearing you guys vote to allow us to put that machinery in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public physically present that wish to give public comment? Ms. Cavaco? Okay. Joined by Mr. Keith.
Good evening. I'm Stevie Keith, precinct nine. I put a little spicy post on all things Plymouth about the upcoming trip to Japan and got a lot of feedback. I'd like to kind of tell you what people think. 99% of people were like, why are we paying anything for anybody to go? 1% said, what's $32,000 in a bucket of 100, 200, 300 million? My answer is that's $32,000. That's a lot of money. My questions are these. What's the total cost of the trip? What are we getting in return? Cultural exchange is great, but a cultural exchange for adults is called a vacation. I have experience taking VIPs around different countries such as Ukraine when I worked for the army at the embassy over there. And I can tell you, we had very packed schedules and nothing was accomplished. Are there strategic partnerships, economic exchange or education outcomes we can see? Will the public receive a formal report or a debrief when the delegates return? How are the delegates selected? I saw a pretty good list there. Are we having students from Rising Tide and MAP Academy? Are they allowed to apply? What's their input? Are they included? And then just to wrap up, I own a plumbing company in town. We earn our money. We work with our hands. Sometimes we bust knuckles, we bleed, it's hard work. It's a hard sell for people like me and people that work for me or people in the industry that when you send people on trips to Japan and there's no, you know, I don't know, deliverables, I think that's concerning. And to wrap that up, tradition's important. I think cultural exchange is great, but it's hard times for people, like, hard times, paycheck to paycheck. I see it every day. I work in people's homes. We need to be fiscally responsible. And to answer your question of how we can get people involved, people like me, younger people, it's like 8:30, I've been here for two and a half hours to tell you how mad I am about sending people to Japan. That should be an indicator that the format of how these meetings happen need to be more exciting or there has to be something to get people that want to contribute and see the so what. I appreciate you guys listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
One more thing. To save you guys 32 grand, add chat GPT, we already do all the, the report for you. So you can thumb through this and see what we have in common and lessons we can learn. I'm already bringing stuff to the table for you. And I'm not even going to charge you for the amount.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Anyone else in physical attendance wish to give public comment? Ms. Cavaco?
It's actually Mrs. Cavaco, but, you know. Mr. Keith, I never had met him before, but we certainly were engaged on social media with what's going on with Japan. One of the issues that I have is that the way the, I don't have an issue that the committee voted for certain amount of people, but I do have an issue with the chairman going and inviting the people that he thought was good instead of bringing that back to the committee. We obviously get into a little bit of back and forth on social media and I think that when, when it comes time that we are sending 10 students, two chaperones and eight VIPs to Shishigahama, when is the time that we are going to concentrate on the children that maybe didn't have the $3,000 that would be able to go there? So I think, I think we're going down the wrong path. I've said it, I said it on social media, I'll say it now, I think it's a junket. I don't appreciate it. And I think if you talk to some parents that can't afford this trip, they would much rather have their children going or reducing the cost to their children than eight VIPs or 10 VIPs going. I think it's ridiculous. One of the things, as a previous selectman, when Shishigahama was a, was a topic, we had an open forum. We had meetings, we had an open meeting to discuss everything that's going on and who was going and what was doing and everything. I don't see that. Two months ago, we brought this up. I brought this up two months ago. Two months ago, you had several people here bringing up about these on the road select board meetings. Still yet to see that on an agenda. Like, what exactly is happening here? Are you just listening to people or barely listening to people and then there's no action? You and I, Kevin, had quite a bit of interchange back and forth. And actually, I find your text messages to be somewhat threatening. I mean, oh, I have friends everywhere? Well, guess what? So do I. And that shouldn't have been what your comment was back to me. You should have done what your board said. You should have done what you should have done as a selectman and you should concentrate on the kids that can't afford this kind of trip. That's, that's an opportunity that they will never have again.
Thank you, Ms. Cavaco. Any other members of the public? Mr. Weber?
For the record, I'm Dale Weber, appearing tonight as the president of the Collective Bargaining Relief Association with the acronym of COBRA. The way your meetings are doctored, public comment is ahead of the town manager's report, which in my opinion is backward and leads the public to come into a following meeting if they have any comment on what was said. But it is what it is and I'm simply here tonight to listen to the town manager's report as it has been stated by you, Mr. Chairman, that it would contain an update on Memorial Hall, an update that we have never gotten as frontline employees. I'm anticipating that update would be relative to the town's sampling results as to the presence of crystalline silica or any other hazardous contaminants and the status of the samples the town has reported to the Plymouth Independent, but has not shared with those boots on the ground in COBRA or those impacted by the callous actions of the contractor that used a leaf blower to clean up after a very large cement wall demolition project behind the stage at Memorial Hall, thereby covering virtually every surface of the hall from top to bottom with a thick layer of the demolished material disturbed after 100 years of encapsulization. When I requested of the town manager and the assistant town manager the results of what I read in the Plymouth Independent, I got a reply, not from these gentlemen, but from the town's FOIA direct email of the archivist slash records access officer, that I would receive an estimate of how much it would cost me to get that information and that I would receive that estimate within 10 business days. So I will now take my seat as I'm very interested in hearing of the transparency and openness we hear so much about and the disclosure of the people's business from this administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any other members of the public in physical attendance? Mr. Everett Malaguti?
Thank you, Everett Malaguti, precinct two. While mine won't be as fiery as another commenter tonight, I do echo the same sentiments as Ms. Cavaco on, Mrs. Cavaco on the actual status of the entire Shishigahama and distinguished visitors, not just presentation but organization and everything else that goes on with it, especially being the vice chairman of the visitor services board too, which we have a hand in the partial funding of the committee that also, we look at updates as well too on Shishigahama and other activities. But aside from that, I don't want to take any thunder from the statements that was already done, but I do want to go on another tangent that was brought up within her conversation during public comment for the on the roads. And that is going to be based on the question on will there or if there ever will be one for North Plymouth and even the downtown, even though you're located in the downtown, we are just looking at commenting from the public, but not any responses like there is, like there was when I was at the one in South Elementary last week. So we in North Plymouth, we are looking at a lot of things that we are dealing with, not just with the developments that are happening, we're looking at projects possibly extending the rail trail with a co-town partnership with Kingston. We're also looking at, will there be the possibility of entering into a historic district of our own and sort of actually having an identity place marker? And these are things that we want to have public conversations with, which is fine for the steering committees, but we need the steering committees to actually be heard by the select board and the residents of those areas to be heard as well. And there's been talk of, we will look into it into the future. West Plymouth keeps being talked about either on the independent or other saying possibly they will get one in the fall. When will North Plymouth be discussed possibly? Winter, next spring? That's what we're hearing that maybe will just be dropped off the face of the map for the on the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Any other members in physical attendance wish to give public comment? Anyone virtually? All right. That concludes public comment for the evening. That brings us into the town manager's report. Mr. Brindisi?
Great. So I guess I'll start with Memorial Hall and talk a little bit about what you're inspired. So, but before I begin, I want to address the public records request. Um, Mr. Weber knows that if you want a public document, you go through our public records access officer. So that's why he was referred to Connor Anderson. So in the future, Mr. Weber, I'm certainly happy to give you Connor's direct email so you can request those, those documents directly. As far as Memorial Hall goes, um, a lot of what I'm going to talk about was a reaction to the comments made and the public comment a couple of weeks back by Mr. Weber and Mr. Machado. Um, in no way were any one of our employees at risk during this event. The one thing Mr. Weber and I will agree upon today is that, um, the contractor was irresponsible in how they determined how to clean up the Memorial Hall after demolition took place. Why they chose to use a leaf blower? We don't know, uh, but we'll be pursuing action against the contractor for their irresponsible actions. So just as far as the timeline goes, on July first, uh, we entered into a contract and we met with the contractor. Uh, we had our, our Memorial Hall director, Joe Goldberg, our facilities director, Colleen Anderson, and our assistant director of inspectional services, Jim Campbell unseen, um, to go over the means and methods of how this demolition would take place. Um, and then, um, after agreement was made from seven one to seven four, the demolition did take place. Uh, and then by closer business on, uh, July fourth, there was a small section, about four feet of wall remaining, uh, that still had to be torn down. So on July fifth, we had a custodian replaced on overtime to come in, open the building so the contractor could complete, could complete that work. Um, it was at that time, although it was unbeknownst to us at the time that the, after the completion of the demolition had taken place, the contractor used a leaf blower to blow all the dust throughout the building. Um, and I don't think it's any, uh, it will not be a shock to anybody in this room that knows anything about the types of construction in a building as old as Memorial Hall that silica will be in the materials. So, um, I don't know if they've received your test results yet, but I can guarantee you, you'll find silica in the test results. Um, I've talked to folks from Clean Harbors, I've talked to folks from our lab, and they all confirmed that silica is in buildings the age of Memorial Hall. It's in the brick, it's in the mortar, it's in the concrete that's used, um, uh, in the construction of those types of buildings. Uh, so there's no shock that silica, the silica on the beach, when you go to the beach, silica's in the sand, silica's everywhere, especially in coastal communities. The question is, are individuals exposed to harmful levels? The OSHA has a time, has an eight hour time weighted average. None of our employees, uh, were exposed to eight hours. Um, so we did not exceed any OSHA time weighted average. Um, I believe it's fifty cubic liters. But anyways, um, so getting back to the timeline, so on seven five, we noticed that there was dust strewn throughout the main floor and throughout the seats of the main auditorium. Um, on seven six, the hall was closed, we had no events, we had no employees on that day. And then on seven seven, uh, we had our custodian enter the building, notified our, uh, our Memorial Hall director what had, what had taken place. Um, um, our Memorial Hall director was not in the facility at that moment, um, didn't understand the level of, um, uh, contamination that was in the building at the time, um, did ask the custodian to clean the floor using, um, a, um, a instrument, a wet vac that, um, uses water to suppress any dust before cleaning it up. Um, at that same day, Gary Guzinski, our assistant facilities manager, entered Memorial Hall, saw the extent of the contamination and contacted SERPRO immediately. Um, and so SERPRO came in, not because we were concerned about silica dust, but because the dust was everywhere, uh, throughout the main hall, and there's no way our forces could have cleaned at the level that we require. SERPRO came in the building, they use HEPA filters, HEPA vacuums, they use wipes throughout the building, and they cleaned it to a level that is under acceptable standards. Um, because of the concern that was raised, unfortunately, uh, we did, we, we kept the building closed. We, um, wanted to be very conservative and cautious. Um, we paid for a air quality test to be conducted by a company called Indoor Air Doctor. Samples came back on that following Friday, which I believe was, um, uh, July eleventh. And, um, we received the indoor air quality results from Indoor Air Doctor, uh, who reported that contaminant levels were, uh, below normal thresholds and everything was satisfactory. The indoor air analysis demonstrated to us that the building is safe with levels of silica. Again, there was silica in the building. I spoke to the lab director at the time, and he said that in his experience, buildings the age and the type of construction Memorial Hall will have silica because of the type of construction and that in buildings that they've done air quality tests in the past, the Memorial Hall didn't have any levels that would, that would be out of the norm compared to other buildings of that, uh, type of construction. So what we continued, um, again, to be certain that other rooms, like the blue room and the green room were clean appropriately, we had SERPRO come back and clean those rooms, and we had air quality tested in those room. Uh, we also did a lead determination. We did an asbestos determination. Um, asbestos determination was done before construction even took place. Uh, and we determined that there was no asbestos and there was no lead either. Um, so we've done everything possible. Um, unfortunately, again, you know, the, we wish the contractor didn't use a leaf blower to disperse, um, the construction debris, um, but we did everything that we thought was appropriate, um, by calling in SERPRO to clean it, using HEPA filters to determine, to demonstrate to the community that the building is safe. We reopened the building, uh, last Friday. Uh, we had two, we had two events, one on Friday and one on Saturday. Uh, we haven't had any other reported issues to this time. We're happy to share those results with anybody who was interested in looking at those air quality results. We did, uh, s- uh, surface samples as well, uh, that again, came back all within normal levels. So, um, we have made the determination that the building is safe and that there has been no hazardous exposure to an individual or any one of our employees. Uh, I can say though, that, um, we, Mrs. Jeneo, to my left, probably spends half his work week, uh, sitting in the same room with those two gentlemen on various matters. So, uh, why, uh, we have to have this conversation, uh, on a Tuesday night when we spend probably twenty hours a week with each other is unbeknownst to me. Uh, if there was ever a concern about Memorial Hall, uh, the phone call could have been made, we would have addressed it immediately. Uh, but unfortunately, um, this has been politicized, uh, by the union, but here we are. So, um, we feel confident that we've done everything in our power to make sure that building is safe. So that's Memorial Hall. I'm going to end my comments today because I've gone on longer than I expected to go on today with just thanking Matt Sheridan for the five acres of land that he donated to the town over at Tupper Hill. We've gone on record, um, that land is now possession of the town. And I also want to thank AD Makepeace for the two point four acres of land on Bourne Road that has been donated by AD Makepeace for the future, uh, fire station, uh, construction. Depending on any questions, that's where I'm going to end tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brindisi. Any questions for Mr. Brindisi by members of the board? All right. Oh, you do? Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. Thank you, Derek Brindisi, for the detailed overview of the events, uh, around the building. Um, I, I appreciate that. Uh, but I, I think that one of the things that we should try to do, uh, that we might think about is, uh, kind of a protocol of something like this happens. I know when I came in that night and we spoke, uh, um, I was unaware that this event happened. And over the years, we've had numerous times where air quality in public buildings where employees have been problematic, uh, and, uh, some of those circumstances have not been, uh, you know, um, the best experience for everyone involved. So thinking about the future, when something like this happens, it'd be great if the select board was notified in advance. And, and again, my advice is that, um, that to deescalate or de-politize, uh, do what we can to reach out to the different representatives of people working in this capacity to, uh, in, inform them of, of what is going on as soon as we know that information is available. Uh, so all of this information you gave to us and, and the timeline is very, very helpful. It was showing that the staff was acting at the highest level. But at the same time, my advice is looking at where we can, uh, improve. And one of the things we could do is probably reach out in advance when we know something like this has happened to, uh, engage the, the parties that we think that would be interested, uh, to let them know, uh, this has happened and we're following this protocol to resolve the matter. So I would, uh, suggest just reflecting on, um, how best, uh, to keep every, all the parties informed as you move forward, uh, handling this, uh, as you just outlined. So thank you very much for that, uh, update.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Any other questions for Mr. Brindisi from board members? All right. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go into select board discussion. Any new business from any board members? Mr. Quinton?
Got a couple of things tonight. Um. I was approached by Officer Tom Kelly, who's doing the Kelly bill. He's actually already filed it with our state delegation. I'm not expecting action tonight, but rather information sharing. And I have one for you, Jade, I'll give you after. Give the table a contents. What it basically is, is when an officer has a tragic incident, um, shot on duty or while on duty, um. PTSD, mental health issues, they get retirement. And the long story short of it, without going into a great detail, is you can only make X amount of dollars when you're in this retirement. This would not cost the community anything. Um, but I feel our support would be great and they're willing to come in and, uh, do a presentation or answer any questions you might have. Um, like I said, they've already, he has already submitted it to the state. And they give an example with him, he was retired. He, uh, since has gone to a law school, got his degree, he's a lawyer, and now his hands are strapped that he can't make over X amount of dollars. And, uh, it's not going to cost anybody anything, it's just going to give him the right to support his family, basically. So those are the nuts and bolts of it. I shared it all with you and, uh, glad to work with us, uh, if we even have to do anything because we're not sure if this is going to be a home rule petition yet, uh. So this is information stage, but, uh, he has reached out, there's ten communities that have done this, uh, they're going to be in that little packet I gave you, a couple of the bills, the language, they're pretty similar. And like I say, I, I believe Michelle Badger has it with, uh, Kathie Linatra. So I just wanted to, he approached me and I wanted to pass it all to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to move on with the county hat. Uh, I am your representative and I do hear the spiciness sometimes.
Hmm.
But, uh, we at the county on the E board, uh, voted, you know, months back, I didn't write the date down, to start a water resources management program. And that's going to be quite involved and lengthy, but basically, give you the short version, twenty seven communities can come together if interested by any chemicals they might need or any, whatever it is in, in volume amounts to save money. Um, what caught my eye was, and you know, I missed the road trip last week, but in this plan, um, communities up to twelve thousand population with their fee per year would be seventy five hundred. Um, over twelve thousand, which is definitely Plymouth, um, would be fifteen thousand a year with a five year buy-in and an opt-out, I believe it's three years. And like I said, this is also infancy, but I'm going to, uh, give you all a copy of this and look it over. But the good part about this, uh, is residents can have their water tested for free. So you heard about that, I believe, last week from residents. So.
Yes.
Residents, no matter what part of town you're in, could have their water tested, which falls into, I've been sitting with Michelle Christiansen and some homeowners that have ponds, and I don't know the, whether it's six ponds or them ponds, but we've already met a couple of times and I don't have the folder with me tonight, but I think that that, that program could also benefit out of this. So I think we should, I will share you this information. Any questions you got? Uh, I have a copy of the MOU. What it will take is five communities out of the twenty seven. Once the five communities commit, then it's go time.
Okay.
So, um, my big excitement for this is hearing what happened last week, hearing that and, you know, the free water testing. I know Hanson's interested in Kingston.
Okay.
So there's two that I think are going to be.
Do we only, I'll, I'll certainly look at the material.
I'm going to pass it on to you, yeah.
The, um, like if they didn't get five, would we not, we don't have to pay until there's a fifth person?
Exactly. So the, I don't see that any community would really, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a little unfair. We have a pond for every day of the year and then some. I remember that because I've said it to every firefighter that graduated in my first ten years, I tell them, welcome to Plymouth. So, uh, yeah, if we could take a peek at that, I'll answer any questions you have, bring them back to the county.
Okay.
I know Mr. O'Brien's more than willing to come in with a commissioner if so needed, if not, um, but I think it's a positive thing for our town, especially the size of this. So I will share that information with you also. I've given it all to Derek and it's been a busy week, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple more things.
Okay.
One, well, I think it's new business, it might be old business. He said, Mr. Serkey has said that he's been here four times or whatever. I mean, I, I think, I, I would like to see this, um, put on an agenda if you so feel. If not, I'll make a motion to put it on a future agenda. I mean, I think it's worth looking at. And why I say this, look at the full sale. Look what happened there. Look what we have. We'll never see this piece of property again. I know they've talked, they've talked to me about it. And I so, for the record, have reached out to their attorney and asked him that I, because I was arguing basically over the shared parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
Not so much arguing, but I had a hard time saying, as a town leader, we're going to share these lo, these spaces with you when, and deny a citizen.
Mm-hmm.
And then I was, even went as far to go to David Gould, uh, another time and ask him if we could do the lot. He goes, Dickie, don't mess with it. I said, okay. I respect what they told me. That's what they get paid for. Uh, that being said, um, I think this warrants conversation and even if we maybe didn't go down that path, but let's, I think we need to have a conversation and talk about it. And if we don't, we, there's other options we have. It worked at one part of town, it should definitely work on that part. So, you know, it's time to either act or get off the pot with that and the construction and all this other stuff. AC units, and this is new business, but, and the only reason I'm bringing it up for two reasons. One, I don't know what happened five years ago. Okay? And I don't know how many units we need, but if someone can get us this information, I'd be more than willing to lead a chat. Well, depending, like I say, you know, are we talking a couple hundred air conditioners? Are we talking three thousand? I mean, I can, you know, I'll, I'll commit to a five thousand dollar kick in if that'll handle sufficiently what they want. But we have no jurisdiction over the, so if we can get that worked out, when I say we, the people that I'm looking at in the audience and brought this up, then I'd be willing to go on it. And I'm going to be a little more honest with you. I turned sixty six and I get my first social security check and I gave it away. So that's what I intend to do with my second check. If so be it, and I can do it for those, I'm going to donate it. And if I have to, I'll give you the third one, just because they're not showing off because I don't need it right now. And if I can help somebody, that's how I am. And everybody knows that. So there you go. If somebody can get me the information, how many units, and we can do it, I'll commit to five thousand dollars, the first five thousand. Okay, Steve? And I wrote them. And then this, well, we're speaking of air conditioning units, and I'm going to point because I always get in trouble for that. It's just a Portuguese Italian thing. Uh, last year, whenever we were dishing out opera money and we put some aside for the schools, it was Nathaniel Martin, not Nathi, yeah, it was Nathaniel Martin, Cold Spring and Hedge School to have cooling stations or and/or air conditioners. And I would like to check with the school department to see if that was done. Did they get the opera money to, to do the, those projects?
I believe it was about three hundred thousand dollars.
I, I, yeah, yeah.
I remember the work was complete, but I can get an update from the.
But it was, it was Hedge School, Cold Spring School, and I think Nathaniel Martin.
Right.
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Right. That work was completed, but I can get an update from the school superintendent.
Well, it was either for the cooling stations or and/or some air conditioning units. So, because I remember Mr. Canty saying that if the schools came down, what would they do? I remember Mr. Canty saying that if the schools came down, what would they do with the air conditioner? Well, we could give it to the housing authority, that's for sure.
Well, yes.
But, anyway, a little early. But, yeah, I just want to check and check that box off. And South Street neighbors, I had a meeting with a few of those this past week or the week before at my office, and speed signs. And they, I guess they were working with Charlie on it, and so now, me and the nice guy friend Charlie is, Charlie referred him to me, and it's my job. So I would just like to see what we could do there. Deputy Chief LeBretton, they're looking for, you know, I see the new signs all over town now, you know, the Blinkin, Soler, you know, I don't know what you have to do to get one of those, but they said they've been working, and once in a while, there was a cruiser there for a little bit, and I explained to them, you know, that, you know, we have very limited, you know, staff, where we, you know, I don't run the department, and I don't want to, so. But if we could do maybe a few radar checks, or one of those signs, or if you want to reach out to the couple of neighbors, they said they could do a petition. I said, don't, we don't need to do a petition, you know, let's everyone take a breath, and, you know, we can handle this. So, between everybody, maybe get the right authorities on that, and that's it for me, and thank you for your patience. I know it was more than three minutes.
That's okay, there's no time limit on select board new business, so you lucked out. Any other members of the board have, yes, Mr. Cohen?
I join Dicky on this putting on a future agenda, the BERTS question, but I think we should take an approach on two fronts. One, we should look at asking our town council what the protocol is in terms of the mass general law referred to tonight and has been referred to at different times. I think it's mass general law 136. You know, what is the, what was that? 139. We should look at that and see if we can get a, kind of a flow chart of what the authority of the town has in terms of what actions, step one, step two, step three, so we have something that we can distribute to the community, so everybody understands how that process works. Because there's pitfalls, we've got to be careful. And one of the things we have to be careful about is the person that does own the property, Fee Simple, they have rights and privileges that we need to respect and understand, because they're paying taxes, they have a building there, but we as a town have to think of the safety of its residents in terms of this building in this location, so close to an important road when we have storms and storm damage. So there's a lot of factors that have been pointed out tonight about the safety concerns, and that's why we should have something on the agenda, but we should be basing that discussion on some homework that council can put together in terms of a timeline of how you would move through that, this mass general law. But always being as open, as helpful, and as constructive with the owners of the property, because we don't want to get into a situation where the owners are failing, that they're being picked on. That's not the case. We want to just know how we can proceed and protect the interests of the residents, but also respect the landowner. There's also, that's one thing, one other thing was that a year or so ago, there was a bylaw at town meeting that was recommended. The bylaw was, did not pass, but I think the intentions of the bylaw was a good idea, and I think we need to revisit that. I know we don't need this bylaw to respond immediately to BERTS, but there are issues across the town, especially in coastal properties, as we get into the circumstances that we're going to see in the very near future. So I think that we need to revisit that bylaw, but maybe put together a working group of individuals that could personalize the bylaw for a community like Plymouth. I think that was some of the reservations people had at that town meeting, but I'd be happy to work with you on that, to revisit this question about a bylaw that would address this issue that isn't being addressed by our current bylaws. The other thing I just wanted to mention is that I had a chance to attend a meeting of the Department of Transportation and the Army Corps of Engineers in the high school at Sandwich on the bridge construction. I thought it was a very, I went there, I work on both sides of the bridge, so I would just happen to be over there, and there was a meeting nearby, and I thought I'd check it out. But this meeting had a lot to do with Southern Plymouth in terms of how this construction will take place on both bridges. There was some very interesting information about the funding for the Sagamow Bridge, which will be the first bridge to go under construction sometime beginning in late '27, early '28. The Bourne Bridge hasn't been funded as of yet, but there's a two-part program of getting funded. I'd like to see if we could reach out to the organizers of this meeting. I did have a chance, and they were interested in coming to Plymouth and coming before the board. I'll give you the contact information, maybe you can reach out to the Department of Transportation and have them come in and give our community a presentation, as they did in Sandwich, letting people know where they are in this process, what we can look forward to, and specifically, how does this affect Plymouth? So that'd be something, I'll convey that information to the board about who to contact. The, I've mentioned this before in previous discussions, old business, is the need for a sand and gravel committee. I've had a chance to talk to the chairperson, and we're trying to put together an outline of what a board might look like to engage the planning department that we could partner with. So I just want to keep that as part of the current discussion, and the importance of putting together that working group. The, I'm glad you mentioned the housing authority, and I'm glad Mr. Lyden was able to point it out to us, because this is something that we should be aggressively looking at. He is right. Ken Buks, years ago, spearheaded with Steve this effort to get these air conditioning units into the building. I think we can rally again as a community to assist them, to look at where the housing authority is in the buildings, what units are working, what units are not working, so we can make a proper assessment of that. There are people in this complex that are on a fixed income, and we should be doing what we can to address that intuition. I think in two days, we're going to be looking at a pretty hot day, so we should be putting that as a priority, engaging the housing authority from the town on how we can help them help the residents. And finally, I noticed that Eversource is interested in putting up a poll on Jordan Road, and I know that staff has been trying to reach Eversource to help with some lighting at Jenny Pond, getting it connected. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to say to Eversource, yes, we can take care of this, if you can take care of that. So Eversource is kind of an interesting group to deal with, so we want to keep that positive. So those are my comments for this evening, but again, definitely interested in the bylaw and improving that, so let me know how I can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business, Ms. Iaquinto?
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to just take a minute to thank everyone who came tonight and in past meetings for public comment. I think we all do appreciate the patience that you all exhibit in waiting your turn to speak, especially when you come in with something very passionate that you want to talk about. Someone tonight mentioned, wondered if we listened to what was the comment that the people said in public comment, and if we took action. And I do want to say that we do, even though we are not able to address the commenters directly, we do take the comments in the spirit of continuous improvement, and really do look for ways that we can, we can do better going forward. So I just want to assure, assure people of that. With that said, last week at the South Elementary School meeting, I had made a suggestion that we come up with some way to monitor our, the action items that we commit to. And we have started that process. Right now, it's just a Word document, but we are working to institutionalize that, and soon we'll all be able to have a nice document with all of the action items that we've committed to, a responsible party, timeframes, regular updates, and we'll work to institutionalize that so that we'll all have visibility into that, into that information going forward. So I think that will be a very important communication tool for the select board, as well as for the interested residents, for some of the projects that we've been talking about. Now, one of the things on my list is an e-bike update on the regulations that we've been talking about, and I understand, Mr. Brindisi, that we do have some new information about that. Would you be able to share that with us?
Yeah. If I could spend a minute just giving the board an update. So I had the opportunity to meet with town council yesterday to talk about advancing a bylaw at the fall town meeting around regulating these e-bikes and e-scooters. And given Massachusetts general law, you know, we, we don't have a lot of flexibility in thinking about how, you know, how we could provide further restrictions. So, you know, one of the ideas was just to try to prohibit the use of e-bikes, say, like on bikeways or bike trails. But then we were turned on to, there was a city in Rhode Island, I forget the name of it, that had issued this public release about e-bikes, and what the public release by this police department in Rhode Island was saying, that they're going to start enforcing the Rhode Island statute. And so we started reviewing the difference of what they were proposing as enforcement actions and using the statute in Rhode Island as the, as the rule of law. So the town council is now going to review the Rhode Island statute, because they have very strict regulations, like for example prohibiting the use of e-bikes by an individual under the age of 16, for example. We don't have that in Massachusetts. So we're going to look at what Rhode Island does as far as, as a state as a whole, and maybe try to mimic some of their laws, and then rewrite those state laws in Rhode Island into a local bylaw. When I met with town council, she did say that she's already had conversations with our attorney general's office, who apparently has stated that there are no other cities in town who are contemplating drafting ordinances or bylaws as it relates to e-bikes. Given that, the AG's office has committed to work with the town of Plymouth to help us draft a bylaw that if, assuming town meeting approves it, would pass muster when it gets sent to attorney general's office. So given the fact that, that the warrant's going to open next week and close a couple weeks thereafter, we won't be ready for the October town meeting, but we certainly will have something prepared by the close of the annual town meeting warrant, which closes on December 18th. So assuming things go well, we'll have, we'll have the ability to present a bylaw for town meeting to review and deliberate upon in April of 2026.
That's really great news. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other new business? So in regards to the, oh, Mr. Jannelli, you don't usually have select board new business.
I know.
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt you, I just felt like this was probably the best time. The board appointed me as the select board liaison to the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan Committee, oh my God, Citizens Advisory Committee, there we go, the CWMP CAC. And I just wanted to report back to the board that we had our first meeting yesterday, and it's a great group of folks, very interested in water quality in the town, very, very interested in master planning for sewer and other options. It's a very diverse committee, made up of chemists with a PhD, gentleman who used to work for a regulatory agency, an engineer, as well as our engineers that we've had consultant. So I, again, want to thank the board for appointing me to the committee, and as of right now, we have no further updates, other than we had our first meeting, we're scheduling our second one for September. So if anybody's interested also in attending that meeting, I'll let you know when it's going to happen. But again, very positive feedback, everybody's very interested, and we're moving forward with the process. So again, thank you for the appointment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cohen?
It slipped by, I was looking at the agenda, looking for letters, and it fell under this section, but we did receive a letter asking about the early dismissal on the 3rd of July, and how the, how those employees will be recognized that were participating and not participating. I'm not sure if staff got the same letter that we received.
I didn't, I didn't see that letter, but I can tell you that all employees were treated fairly.
Okay. I'll provide that letter for you, that was sent to me. Thank you.
All right. So in terms of new business, so in terms of the BERTS issue, I think the next steps, in my opinion, that we should pursue would be talking to both town council and inspectional services about what our options are, so that we can make an informed decision. Do we want to do what was suggested in public comment? Do we want to pursue a nuisance bylaw? Do we want to do a third thing? We can certainly begin the process of having a presentation, these are our options, and picking from those options. If we do want to do what was suggested, we'd need to have a public hearing, which would require notice to the property owner and that role, so, but we can start the process of looking into that, and also considering, because BERTS is unfortunately not the only derelict or abandoned structure in the community. So I would prefer a solution that would be repeatable for others. Everybody knows BERTS, so it's a common lexicon, but there's, I mean, I know when I was looking for a house, there's a house on South Street that was abandoned then, and that was nine years ago, and it's still abandoned. And it's like you could stand on the porch in the house next to it and touch it. So it's right next to other people's houses, so.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah. It's tough, like, like BERTS is an easy one to target, and BERTS is also one that we could reclaim the money from, for the taxes, they've been, they haven't been doing anything with the property, but they've been paying their property tax bill. But some of these other ones may be in a different posture, and it may be harder for the town to address those. So I think a comprehensive solution should be examined, and then, and then we can take appropriate action as the board sees fit, but we can start the process in regards to that, if that's agreeable. Any, any other new business? Yes?
Sorry, one more thing. I had an opportunity to visit Jenny Pond the other day, and that, it's so beautiful, the work that was done there was just, is just magnificent. And I'm just wondering if we're planning any ribbon cutting or any way to celebrate that, that area, even now or when, in the future, when it's.
So that's a, as you know, that's a multi-phase project. We certainly will have a ribbon cutting when the entire project is complete, so that's just phase one, the dredging, they're going to, phase two will start this fall with a bypass of, of the dam, and then they'll make their way down with walkway improvements all the way down to Bruce Tegon. So that's, I think it's got another 12 to 18 months of construction, so we are a ways away. But I think once everything's complete, yeah, we definitely will plan a big ribbon cutting. It's a $17 million project.
So celebration to come?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Letters? Other than the letter that snuck into new business? All right, old business? All right. Do I have, oh, did you have old business? Are you making?
Just a little bit.
Okay, go ahead, old business. Mr. Quinto?
Old business Memorial Hall. When we get ready to get our numbers in order, our house in order, before we start the budget process, which are ideas on how much free cash we have, and so on and so forth, so we could actually do an evaluation on how we might pay for that. I know we're going to have a discussion on it, but maybe it's not a bad idea, instead of taking all the money and just spending it all this year, that we take a breath, do our contractual stuff, see how much free cash we have, and, you know, we know we have to buy public safety vehicles, we know the argument, you buy eight, you get the eight. I'm not talking about that, fire engines, because I've seen the community relying on Kingston for fire coverage in my time here. It was a long time ago, thank goodness, but it was. So I would like to have that discussion before we get into the normal every day, and while we're on old business, this building, the cupola is chipping away, the windows are, this is a great building, I think everybody knows how I felt about it, but I'm even going to feel worse about it if we don't maintain it properly. I don't know where we are, what we have to do with that, but it should definitely be a priority. This building is beautiful, but we need to, you know, it needs painting. I don't know, I just want to say it before everybody starts with all the budget stuff, I know we're going to have a conversation, but I am one for this year is to take in a breath and holding pretty much to what we did last year, only with contractual stuff. And let's, let's take a breath and see what happens, and see what kind of free cash we got, because I'll, I'll tell you right up front, I'm not going to be one to raise my hand to put Memorial Hall in the CPC, 100%, no way. I will never support that as one select board member. We come up with some kind of crazy cash like we had last year, you know, and that's what you guys get paid for. I'm just being a little pre-vocal on old business, and the building, it drives me crazy. I'm going to keep asking you that question every month until somebody answers me to, you know, what's going to be the deal here? You know, because I, I love the building now that I'm in it, and we need to take care of it. You know, because I love the building now, the minute, and we need to take care of it. I mean, so I just keep bringing it to everyone's attention. It's chipping, and every time I sit in that little conference room, I'm staring right at it, and it's driving me crazy. At least fix the cupola, and I'll probably be quiet after that because I won't be able to see it. So on a later note, but just things that I think, and I know you're very well versed in a professional in the finances of the community, but that's just my take on it. If we could see what we can, you know, chip away at, but at least get it dry and secure. I don't know what they're going to recommend, but it's a lot of money, and I think we can do it, we just have to put our minds to it.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quintil. Mr. Cohen?
Just one note on that. There was, when we did approve the funding for the restoration of the 1820 courthouse, we did put together a revolving fund. We hope that, that the activities that were taking place on the training, the courthouse green, any revenue generated by the building or the green would be going into this fund, so we have some money out there to start looking at at least addressing the cupola in terms of the weathering that's taking place on it. Obviously, we probably need to start, building opened in 2017, so we're now looking at nine years of, eight years of wear and tear, and we should revisit that to get a handle on this, just like Mr. Quintil indicated, that sitting in that conference room and looking out or driving by, you're starting to see these conditions. So there were discussions in 2017, knowing that in the near future we'd have to address these things, so there is, it's important to note, there is a revolving fund that was established at that time. I do not know what's in that account right now, but I knew there was something passed by town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business? All right, if there's no other old business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It has been moved, it has been seconded. Any objection? Hearing and seeing none? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Ms. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Quintil?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is unanimous, we are adjourned at 9:04 PM. Thank you.